Ready?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and call to order the Thursday, October 7th, 2021 Newport Beach Planning Commission. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Sarah, would you like to start? Do our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. We'll do our roll call.
All commissioners are present this evening.
All right. All right, now, on this part of the agenda, we have public comments on anything that is not on our agenda for this evening. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to come and speak to something that's not on the agenda, feel free to come on up. Seeing that there are not any public comments, we'll close public comments for non-agenda items, and we'll move on to item five in the agenda, which is request for continuances. Is there any requests?
None this evening.
All right, great. We'll move on to number six, is our consent items, which we just have the minutes from our September 9th meeting. And I'll take any motions or...
I'll make a motion with Mr. Mosher's edits.
All right.
I'll second.
There's a second, okay.
Would you like to take a public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Now's the time to make a public comments for the minutes. If anyone has any comments specifically towards the minutes from September 9th, feel free to come up. Seeing that there's none, we'll... Oh. Okay. Hold on. We did. I did read that specific part. So that is forever in our minutes, forever and ever. So seeing that there is no other public comments in respect to the minutes, we'll go ahead and close that public comment section and move to a vote.
Curtis has more hair than me, so if he wants to...
The motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Kustermeier abstaining.
All right. All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to item, or section seven, which is our discussion items, which this is the appointment of commissioners for the formation of an ADU, ADU ad hoc committee for accessory dwelling unit regulations update. And I had spoken with Lauren Kleiman and Eric Wigan, and they had interest, and I had interest as well. So the three of us would initially form that committee and dig into this issue a lot more. I know that's a very big issue, this and some of the other SB 9, SB 10 that's been coming down, and how this all affects our city. So we were gonna, or we're gonna form this committee, at least from the ADU side, and review that in more details to recommend some, recommend some, maybe some specific guidelines going forward to the city council. So is there any comments from any planning commissioner on this? Seen... Oops, we have one. Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to be a part of the committee on that. I just want to ask staff, how will the process work moving forward? So tonight, we'll choose us, our sacrificial lambs, the per se. And then how will we then engage the public? Will it be like you usually do with communications? Or could us as commissioners suggest stakeholders and those who are experts in this field, like builders, developers, architects, those, and then those maybe in the community who are either activists or experts in the industry that would know how these would work? Because since we have such a unique community of what works in Cronomarre might not work on the peninsula, which would work on Balboa Island, that might not work in the Heights. So getting all of that, and when we did that third story, third story massing, I think you did have like a design team that came in, and I guess just allowing us as commissioners, and maybe those who aren't on the ad hoc also might have some great ideas too, of some folks that would be able to engage in that. So I just want what the process is moving forward.
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner Wigan. You know, we'd like to sit down with the three ad hoc committee members and kind of discuss the process going forward. Our intent is to make it a transparent and engaging process. I think the accessory dwelling units subject is an important subject for the community. Just as you mentioned, you know, we brought in a design professional to help us with a third story massing, and that's something that we'd like to do for ADUs also. It's gotten more complex since the last time the council has adopted their ordinance, and so we want to make sure that we're following what the community wants and what the committee members would like to recommend. And the committee members, you know, helps staff guide us through this process. And that's kind of the whole point of doing this, because it is, it is a complex subject. We do want to engage with the community, and we do want to bring in design professionals and do it as transparent as possible.
Great. That really means a lot to me, and I know that it probably means a lot to this body and the community too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. All right. Looks like there's not any further comments from the commission. We'll open up for any public comments specifically to this item. Any public comments? Looks like there is none, so we'll go ahead and close the public comments. And I guess this will just be a motion for receive and file. Is that probably the best way to say this?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have to do a...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, that's right. Yeah. How about I'll second it? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to section eight, which is going to be our public hearing items. And our first item up tonight is item number three. It's New Look Skin Plan Community Amendment, PA 2021-047. And on this item, I'm going to have to recuse myself, just it's in the vicinity of the Pacific Club, which I have a membership in.
Yeah, and I'm gonna recuse myself as well. It's in the vicinity of a property where my business, my company conducts business.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and start with staff presentation.
Thank you. And thank you for being here tonight to the commissioners. My name is David Lee from Planning. This is the New Look Skin Amendment to PC 11 at 4241 MacArthur Boulevard. So this project is of request for amendment of land use designation within PC 11 for 4241 MacArthur Boulevard, which is the project site. It is for the amendment of the designation from restaurant site, which it currently is today, into a general commercial site. Just for some context, this is the property in red. It's located between MacArthur Boulevard and Dove Street, within the airport area. The general plan designates the site as mixed-use horizontal. It is, this site is also recognized as a future housing site within the housing element, and within the new housing element, that has not changed. It is zoned as PC 11, which is the Newport Place Plan Community, and designated as Restaurant Site One. As you can see, it's a irregular shape, 30,000 square foot approximately, and the use now is a vacant restaurant. So just to give you some background on what Restaurant Site One is, it is, it was comprised of these three parcels, the northern one, the subject property, and the southern one. In 2011, the southern parcel went through the same process and amended the land use to be General Commercial Site Eight. Tonight, the project is to make the same update and to convert the subject property into the same designation, which is General Commercial Site Eight. The northern property, 4251 MacArthur, will remain as Restaurant Site One. So this is the difference in the permitted uses between the two designations. As you can see, Restaurant Site One is exactly as it sounds. The only allowed use is restaurants. Whereas General Commercial Site Eight expands the amount of allowed uses. It includes professional, medical offices, retail, and also it does include restaurant as permitted use, as well as, you know, other types of commercial uses. So it's just an expansion of the amount of uses and potential. The staff has made findings in support of the project. The convert, the update to general commercial would provide flexibility for future commercial uses, as there's approximately 2,500 future residential units coming into the airport area. The uses that are projected, that would be allowed, would all offer a reduction in required parking and a reduction in traffic when compared to a restaurant. So there's no impacts in those areas. Therefore, staff does recommend that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and recommend approval of the PC amendment. The next step would be an ordinance, which would be reviewed by the city council at a future hearing. My name is David Lee. I'm available for questions, and the applicant, Marco Hanawi, is also here as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the thorough presentation, David. Are there any questions from commissioners for staff? Okay, I guess I have one main question. I know you touched on it briefly in your presentation about the overlay for housing, given what we are all facing with RENA, and also if you can address table one, kind of secondarily, how many of those units in this area are going towards that RENA allocation?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Kleiman. The, as I spoke earlier, the, it is listed as a housing site in the current and proposed housing element. The draft housing element will include additional housing opportunity sites throughout this area, and staff doesn't believe that it's going to be detrimental for the city's ability to accommodate the RENA allocation by converting this site, as there, it would remain a housing, potential housing site, and there's also residential overlay in this, over this site. So there is an avenue for future housing. It doesn't eliminate the possibility at all from what there is today.
So even if this were approved at some point in the future, because that overlay still exists, that would still remain in place?
Yes, it does not, this, approving this would not take it out of the housing element as a housing site. It doesn't result in that. It just expands the uses of, the commercial uses available now, but it's still, it will be a potential housing site in the future.
Oh, so you're referring to the housing element overlay, not the overlay that was in the specific plan for this area?
Yes, that would remain as well. It's because general commercial site would also have, also has the residential overlay in the PC, so that does not change.
Got it. And then my second question was about that table one. Just which of those, if any, or all are, will be counted towards our RENA allocation?
All of those units, if approved, would count toward the RENA allocation.
Great. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, moving on to ex-party communications, starting with Commissioner Rosin.
None.
None for me?
None.
None for me either.
And none for me either.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant have a presentation this evening?
Applicant does not have a presentation.
Okay.
There's no applicant.
There's no applicant?
Oh.
The applicant is present tonight, if you wish to speak to him.
I guess we'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment.
Vice Chair Kleiman and members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I would just suggest perhaps the staff didn't totally understand your question about table one. Most of those appear to me to be proposed and not yet built units, but the 1,244 for Uptown Newport, I believe a substantial, maybe not substantial, a part of that has already been built, so that would not count towards the future RENA allocation that you were asking about. But I believe the others in the table would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from commissioners or motions?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. I'm disappointed that we didn't get to see what this building's going to look like. Pretty much a mess right now. We went over there recently with graffiti and broken plaster and door locations. I'm sure this is going to break it up into windows and other elevation changes to improve it. We didn't get anything in our packet, number one. Number two, I'm going to put in, if this is approved, a condition that they tear out this parking lot and rebuild it. It's horrible. You can tell where the property lines are very easily by driving through there and seeing the dotted lines. And finally, I assume there are CCNRs that allow them to share parking, because all the parking lots blend together. Is that correct?
That is correct. It says shared parking lot between those three sites that I discussed earlier.
And if, and they have 20, they're overparked by 27?
Correct. There's a surplus.
I think there's somebody else on the agenda that needs 27. Is there any way that... Just kidding. Thank you.
So Commissioner Kettig, as far as the, you want a condition in there? If we approve, that the parking lot has to be redone by them? Or because does the classic queue, will they be responsible for that remodel, or just simply these guys? Because I guess Mr. George is...
So let me go ahead and answer that question, Commissioner Wigan. So this is going to be just a recommendation to the city council. It's an ordinance with regards to the parking. There's no opportunity to condition that at this time, but staff will make a note of the parking lot when they're, when it's submitted for a permit.
Do I hear a motion? Do you have another comment?
Yeah, it all happened so quickly. Someone maybe could help. I don't, maybe you could clarify why there is no building upgrades as a part of this? I mean, it's, is this not an application for the building? It's just the zoning, and the building's coming back at some future point in time?
Yeah, so...
It was unclear to me why.
So we're adjusting the zoning to allow the medical office, and so if you, if you do approve this item and adjust the zoning, the remainder is a ministerial process. Correct. There's no discretionary behind this.
Okay, not a lot of activity up here on this one. Well, my only concern was the housing has been addressed, and since that overlay remains in place, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve PA 2021-047.
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Kleiman. Appreciate that. We'll move on to item number four, which is BSP Bristol LLC Medical Office, PA 2020-052. So staff, if you want to go ahead and give your presentation, we'll...
Yes, thank you, Chair Lowry. Welcome back. My name again is David Lee, and this is the BSP Bristol Medical Condominiums. This project includes a condominium conversion, tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, and a traffic study located at 1400 and 1420 Bristol Street North. So I wanted to start the presentation with just a summary of the previous hearing, which took place on September 9th. And at that time, the applicant was requesting for a 100% conversion from professional office to medical office. At the same time, they were requesting approval of parking lift system, which was like 17 space lift in the parking lot. However, after taking feedback from the planning commission in the last hearing, the applicant is no longer requesting 100% medical, and is no longer requesting approval of parking lifts. The application before you today is, has now been reduced from 100% to now 70% medical office maximum, and the remaining office space would be 30% professional office. They're also, again, removing the parking list from the application. So previously, as I stated, we only considered the use as a 100% medical office, and therefore we considered the parking based on the code-required medical, which is one space per 200 square feet. However, now that there's a blended use between 70% medical and 30% professional office, it's necessary to analyze and establish the appropriate parking rate for the professional office use that's going to remain on site. So in looking at the professional office parking, the subject property is located in PC 11, which requires one space per 225 square feet. When you apply that code to the professional office, which exists today, 100% professional office, that results in a deficit. However, the PC was adopted in 1970, and staff does believe that the standard that's within the PC is outdated and does not reflect the citywide standards for professional office, which is what the zoning code has as at one space per 250 square feet. When you park the professional office using that rate, it's actually parks right-to-code at 150 spaces. So the PC actually allows for modification from one per 225 directly to one per 250 Sorry about that. And staff believes that the one per 250 is appropriate because, because it matches the zoning code rate, which is used citywide for all professional offices throughout the city. Furthermore, the latest IT standard recommends a rate of one per 400 for professional office, and with that, there's, you would see a major surplus on site. So seeing that recommendation from IT, staff is very comfortable and recommends using the one space per 250 for the professional office. Again, this is a blended parking requirement, so with that rate established, with 30% professional office and 70% medical office, the required parking is 177 spaces with these, with this mixture of uses. There's 150 spaces that are provided on site, and therefore, there's a code deficit of 27 spaces. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a parking waiver of 27 spaces, and that is per Staff believes that, staff supports the waiver of 27 spaces, as there was a parking study, which was provided by Arc Engineering, dated August 12th, 2021. That parking study collected data from comparable office, Orange County office sites, medical uses, which were also non-urgent care sites, as this project has been conditioned to not have any urgent care. So it matches up with the data. And the results of that parking study recommended a rate of one space per 258 square feet. So the total demand, when you blend the uses together, is 147 spaces. When there's 150 spaces, that leaves a surplus of three spaces. So with this study, staff does support the waiver, because the parking lot is large enough to accommodate the blend of uses. Just to wrap up this presentation, I just wanted to show the site plan again, and just remind the commission that aside from the conversion to medical, this project includes improved parking lot, where there is non-compliant drive aisles and parking stall widths. The applicant is proposing to widen them to compliance. The project also includes parcel map for condominium purposes. And as discussed in the last hearing, now it is conditioned that the project plant landscape hedges to impede access between this property and neighboring lots for parking and act as a visual barrier as well. Just to note that staff did provide a memo yesterday, which provided the updated site plan, and also changed the, updated the trip, predicted trip numbers that this project would generate, and that number lowered, because the medical office percentage lowered. With that being said, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and adopt Resolution PC 2021 approving the project. Once again, my name is David Lee, and the applicants, Matt Haugott and Phil Greer, are here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, does any of the Arc Commissioners have questions for staff at this time?
Just, David, could you just tell me what condition is the, that shows the property line being landscaped to prevent crossover from the neighboring?
Yes, Commissioner Wigan, the landscaping conditions are from condition 11, 12, and 13, and condition 13 is a specific condition that discusses the hedges to be planted.
Okay. Yeah, we had seen a letter, I think, from the neighbor, asking about three areas that they wanted to address, and that was, one was landscaping issue, one was signage. That said, there would be no parking for the neighboring businesses, and strictly, you know, somewhat enforced. Is that a condition that is listed in there at all either, or is that just kind of an agreement that the property owner would kind of have to do?
The signage is not within the conditions as of now, but the, yeah, the hedges are.
Okay. And then there was some discussion in that letter, you probably had seen, that talked about irrigation, you know, some type of an agreement with that between the two. Maybe the applicant can mention that during their discussion, if brought up. But I just was curious as to, you know, if that's something that's practiced in a lot of other properties with, you know, kind of agreements with their neighbors or not. I just was curious to get touch on that, maybe when the applicant comes up.
Mark, you have a question?
So a question about the parking rate that's being addressed here, that the parking study says that medical office should be parked at a certain number. Will the circulation element be something that's going to be looked at? I'm assuming it's the circulation element, maybe I'm wrong. Where maybe this won't, this will be adjusted in some future point in time, if we believe that this maybe is not an accurate number?
So, thank you, Commissioner Rosin. So we are actually currently doing a parking study, and we're up, we're looking at, you know, is our parking code outdated because, due to COVID, due to everything else, with regards to the gig economy? So we're actually going through an actual parking study, so the answer is yes, we actually are studying. It won't be part of the circulation element, it's just separate from it.
Okay, it's some separate action.
Right. Council's already directed us to go ahead and study and look at our parking standards.
Great, thanks.
Can you just cover the parking rate for the outpatient surgery center? I know we've talked about that in previous hearings.
Thank you, Vice Chair Climen, for the question. And the outpatient surgery per the zoning code is parked at one space per 250 square feet, which is equal to the office rate. So it's looked at as lower traffic or parking generating use by the code.
Any further questions? Oh, one more there.
I can't help myself. If the parking rate comes back with whatever this parking study, that's analysis that goes through, and it comes up something that's a little more stringent in the future than this, how do we... how do we be comfortable with that?
You know, we're... That's a good question, Commissioner Rosin. We're studying it, council hasn't adopted anything. So to try to predict the future of what's going to happen, it's so unknown. I don't know. You know, the codes change all the time, things become non-conforming. It's just this part of the planning process.
It's the code. And so, you know, getting comfortable with the deficits and these number ranges is difficult, at least it is for me. And so when we hear about, okay, well, we're talking about adjusting this parking rate because we believe it's inaccurate and updating the code, that makes sense. And we wish for the applicant that not what is already done, but it's a kind of a conundrum, so I was just wondering. Thank you.
Follow me up on that. I did some homework in the field. I went down to these sites that they reference in this traffic study, drove around each one, got lost, found my way out of that part of South County. But I went ahead and studied the, online, the parking standards. We all know that the city of Irvine has tough standards, very well-designed properties, streets, setbacks, landscaping. They have medical at 1 to 180, not 1 to 200. And it seems to work for them and their properties. So I bring that up as a recommendation or a suggestion when you start studying this. And the COVID people working at home, that's going to change. You know, it's a big bump in the road, but they're going back. So I worry about what we're doing with medical, as well as handicap for medical. There should be a separate condition on that, because more people go to the doctor who have need to park in the handicap lots. So I just bring that up as a suggestion if staff's working on it right now.
Any further questions for staff? Looks like there is none at this time, so we'll start with Commissioners on ex parte communication. We'll start with Commissioner Rosin, and come down this way.
I had a telephone conversation with the applicant.
I also had a telephone conversation with the applicant's consultant.
None.
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 I met with the applicant's consultant.
And I spoke with the applicant's consultant on the phone, as well as the neighboring business owner in the last two hearings. So I'm not sure if that's still relevant, but we discussed a whole host of issues.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and move to the public hearing portion. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And I'd like to ask first, does the applicant have any presentation that they'd like to, or comments they'd like to make?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Commission. We think Mr. Lee and everybody has done a wonderful job, and unless you have some questions of us, we really have nothing to add to it. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, I do, please.
Who owns this building, these buildings?
It's the one building that...
There's two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, same owner, Buchanan Street Partners is the real estate company who owns it on behalf of a LLC with various investors, but they're the managing entity.
So you're involved in the property, or are you just?
With the property, with the company.
Just to answer a simple question. Why do you think you should get a 27-car reduction? Why?
Based on looking at what the parking rate has been as far as the actual general office use at that project and other projects in the, call it the Quail Dove area, our experience on our project, the jetty, which I brought up at our last meeting here, where we spent a lot of time working with Mr. Greer on doing the CUP process with adding medical uses that we're looking to come in there. And that continues to not be an issue at that project with parking, and that's actually a lower parking rate from what we're comparing here. So for us, this is just, we look at also general office, you know, what was brought up by the IT, that is very real in Newport Beach, for especially the Class B office, as we'll call it. You know, these businesses who take up 2,000 square feet, there might be two or three people in that office at any one time. And there's parking garages that are empty across Newport Beach, so the top floor. Fletcher Jones is running out places all over. So for us, we're very comfortable that a mixture of by appointment-type medical businesses, these aren't urgent care, these aren't businesses that people are just showing up unannounced, these are by appointment. And so it's a controlled flow. And so for us, we feel very comfortable with that. And that's why we're also more than willing to start at 70%. And we feel comfortable that we'll be back here after 70% if we're fortunate to get that approved, to get 100%, because we do feel very confident that as we go through this process, that, you know, we will be signing these up, these spaces up, to the proper uses that are going to be a lower-density use.
Or 50%? You can't rent them out or sell them, and you'll come back and say, hey, you know, we shouldn't get that. I don't know, I just find it, you didn't have a very clear request why you need that much of a discount in parking. Call it a variance, call it a waiver, anything you want. I just can't get my hands around it. I haven't heard a good reason for it. Whereas other people who develop medical office buildings had to find the land big enough to support their building. They had to do it, and they lost square footage because they didn't have the parking, but they made it work to code.
Well, we think two things. One, it is what... the site is what the site is, and we can't change the site. We can't change the dimensions of the site. Second of all, we believe that the IT study, which is going to show an even lower parking density, coupled with our study, which shows we have sufficient parking, provide the opportunity for us to go in and do this.
Okay. Commissioner Rosin?
Just for the purpose of clarification, I'm sorry, before you sit down, did I hear, I think I did, that you're planning on coming back with a revised study based on two years from now, once you're operational and you're going to take a look at maybe...
Well, I think we'll evaluate at that point in time. I mean, obviously, we came to the planning commission at 100%, so we obviously felt confident based on that data. And so it's a future potential. We don't know, obviously. We'll see where that takes, but that's just our opinion, you know.
All right.
Thanks.
Any other... Commissioner Wagon?
Phil, just one other, one other on that earlier topic. On the letter had said that they would prefer a fence than, you know, having landscaping. I think that that's fine to have the landscaping. Would you be down the road if landscaping's not working? I envision people going to the podiatrist skipping through, you know, landscaping to try to park through there, but, you know, would you be open to discussion with the owner next door to say, you know, it's not working, we do agree with you?
Absolutely. I, in fact, had a conversation with Mr. Light about a week ago, and we discussed this very issue. And the conclusion we reached was that we'd put the landscaping in because we think it makes a better aesthetic look. And then if it doesn't work, we are more than happy to sit down with him and figure out a way to do it and do it right, and come back to you if we need to for a fence or whatever it's going to be. But no, we're wide open to that. It's simply a question of, we'd like to take this first step, see what works, and if it works, great. If it doesn't, and you've got, you know, people going to the podiatrist through the hedges, we'll put a fence up.
Yeah. And then as far as the signage, would you be supportive?
No problem with that at all.
Okay. And then the last, there was a discussion about irrigation, sharing that plan with him. What is that?
We have offered to and will provide Mr. Light with our landscaping plans, our irrigation plans, and any other plans that he wants, so that he can take a look at them and have input into them.
Okay, okay. And then I guess I'll go back to staff, then as far as signage, you know, is there something we would condition in that, or is that just kind of just a typical thing that says, you know, there's usually those private party impounding, you know, rules with signage that say, if you're parking here illegally and they have some type of management on it, they can tow the car and, you know, things like that. Will that something that would be just done as an agreement through the owner, or is that something we would condition?
Yes, Commissioner Wagon, that can be conditioned. If the commission does want that condition, we can add in a condition that would require signage, whatever type of signage that you think is appropriate. That is something that we can add into the final resolution as a condition.
Okay. Yeah, just want to be fair, but also recognize that, do we do that often? Is that something that's typically done? And is that something administratively you can just handle?
It's not typically done, but like I said, it's a possibility for us to do it.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Got a question again. Last go-around, there was a big discussion, or enough discussion, about the square footage of the existing facility. I see in the current staff report it says 37,515. Is that, has that been verified, or is that just the number that's floating around? Because the adjacent property owner brought it up and said, hey, what's the real size of this?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Ketting. That has been verified in our, it's in our database of plans and permits. It's, since the building's from, I believe, 1978, there's been a lot of different construction and projects going on throughout the history of this building. But doing our best, looking at the building, this was the number that staff went forward with, as we saw it recurring in different plans. The numbers that have been brought up before, they mostly are the real estate numbers for promotional purposes. And I've done the research on that online, a quick search online, you can find a various number of square footages, but the city doesn't base square footage based on the online listings. That's gone up to like, I've seen a range from 35,000 to 45,000 for this site. So it's a long range. But the city does, the staff does go off the plans and the permits in our database.
All right, thank you. Last, another question for the applicant. I didn't care for the location and the style of the lifts where they were. And maybe the solution is, I'll bite my tongue, put 27-car lift on the back of the property along that long line and call it a day.
We looked at that. We felt that there was significant opposition, confusion to how the lifts would be operated, who would operate them, et cetera, et cetera. We just felt it was better and easier for the plan if we removed the lifts. You guys scared us out of them, what can I say?
No, no, no. Nobody had an answer for it. Nobody said, well, there'll be a person there, you know, for 12 hours a day, working that thing. I went by the other one again in town, and there's still nobody using the lift, I'm telling you. I mean, but my point is, that's your, that might be your card to get out of jail. I don't know. I mean, go ahead, because you guys talked about it, putting them on the back property line there so that they're not out in the front, and...
I think we had some issues with the neighbors for that. And it just, at the end of the day, it just did not seem to work. And so we scrapped the whole issue.
Okay. I tried, thanks.
Any other further questions for the applicant?
Chair Lowry, if we could just get confirmation from the applicant that they've read and agreed to the conditions of approval.
That was actually the question I was just about to ask. Do you agree with the conditions that was in the staff report and the resolution here?
Yes, we do.
All right, great, thank you. Read my mind. All right. If there's no other questions for the applicant at this time, we'll go ahead and move to members of the audience, if they would like to come and have any public comments. Good evening, Mr. Mosher.
Thank you again, Chair Lowry, members of the commission. My name again is Jim Mosher. I submitted some comments on this in writing, in the event that you do adopt the resolution that is before you tonight. One of the comments was, I could not find in any of the conditions of approval the actual requirement of the 70% conversion limitation. Staff responded by saying that the maximum of 70% of the existing building is reflected in the revised project description and does not require a specific condition of approval to be enforceable. I would again suggest it would be very wise, if you adopt this, to make clear what it is that you're approving. The only project description I can find is on page 117, a statement of facts. It says that the applicant proposes to convert 70% of the existing professional office complex into medical office use. That is rather ambiguous as to whether it's talking about floor area or number of units. If you read the next sentence, it says the remaining 30% of the floor area will remain professional office use. Aha, it must mean floor area. But if you look at the first bullet point under it, it says the condominium conversion is authorizing the conversion of 70% of the existing office units. So is it 70% of units or 70% of floor area? And as Commissioner Ketting has pointed out, there's been some dispute as to what the floor area is. Reading the staff report, what is before you tonight is to approve up to 26,260 square feet of medical office use in this complex. So I would suggest you add a condition of approval, allowing up to 26,260 square feet of floor area to be converted to medical office use, if that is indeed what you want to approve, and not leave it ambiguous. The second point I made was the staff, in the staff report and in some of the findings, seemed to find, to justify this large parking reduction, that it required a parking management plan. Normally, there would be a condition of approval requiring use of the parking management plan, or at least referring to it. I think that also should be a condition. And then finally, this resolution, for reasons unknown to me, the appeal section at the very end has been changed to say that there's only a 10-day appeal, subject to Title 19, which is the appeal for the tentative parcel map only. I believe there is also an opportunity to appeal the conditional use permit, which is under Title 20, and I believe the time for that is 14 days. So I believe the decision section of the resolution needs to be revised to properly reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jim Light, property owner adjacent to the subject property at 1401 Quail Street. Thank you for taking the time to read my email. As I stated in my email, the applicant and I did have a discussion about spillover parking and crossing over, and we did discuss a hedge. Just my take on the conversation was slightly different. I didn't believe that I indicated I agreed that a hedge would be sufficient. In my mind, I've been around town where I've seen lots of hedges planted to prevent crossover walking, and they just go right through it, and you get a path worn. Hedges, in my mind, don't work. Across the street from Big Newport, it's a problem. Out at Park Place in Irvine, where Houston's and those stores are, it's been a problem. But so my appeal would be, let's put in a fence and be sure that there isn't any crossover spill, or prevent the spillover parking by preventing people from being able to just cut through, cut through a hedge. Secondly, I appreciate your concerns about the parking, and signage would be very helpful. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to put in signage. And lastly, the planting plan. So the planting plan, I hadn't seen the planting plan until the last hearing, and it shows between our properties improved planting, improvements to the plant... it shows between our properties improved planting, improvements to the planter there. The planter really is maybe as wide as this podium, and the property line runs approximately in the middle of it, so I'm not sure how landscape can be planted without actually impacting our, physically impacting our property, crossing the property line. So it seems to me right, as a property owner, if it's going to impact my property, I should have some approval to what is planted, how it's planted, and how it's irrigated. So, thank you again for being concerned about the parking, I am too, and so I just want, I just don't want spillover parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing no further comments, we'll go ahead and close the public comments section here, portion, and we'll bring it back to the commission for any other further questions with staff or discussion amongst ourselves.
Real quick, I noticed on page nineteen there, maybe it's a typo, finding and facts, item one of paragraph A, required findings, condominium conversion, it says the existing hundred-and-fifty-four space parking lot has been reduced further down to a hundred-and-fifty-four. I thought it was a hundred-and-fifty. Once they figured out that driveways weren't the right depth and the angles of the parking, et cetera. That's just, wouldn't want to leave that in there as a mistake.
Yes, Commissioner Kettin, I could address that number. Within that fact, it's discussed that the original was a hundred-and-sixty-seven, and subsequent to the construction of the hundred-and-sixty-seven, throughout the years until now, it's been reduced to one-fifty-four. So it has been reduced to one-fifty-four. The project today will further reduce it to one-hundred-and-fifty. So I do not believe that's a typo, that fact.
And then following up on Mr. Rosine's comment, I didn't see anything in the conditions that they will be required to come back and do a study showing that it works or it doesn't work. I heard the applicant say, we might come back and want it all medical.
Commissioner Kettin, you're correct, there's no condition to say that they can come back and, or they have to come back. The applicant is free to apply for an amendment to their use permit. I mean, that everybody has a right to kind of change what they have.
Just curious.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Klosztemeyer, would you have?
I, I too have some concerns about the parking here. I think it is good that a parking study has been done. I think it's sometimes easy to guide the results of a parking study, but I appreciate the additional analysis that David provided in looking at the parking requirements in the current zoning code and the ITE standards. That helps give me comfort that this seventy percent conversion would actually be compliant with parking, should those standards be applicable to the project. So that does give me additional comfort that I think that this request for relief from these twenty-seven spaces, I think is generally okay, in my opinion. I think there were some good points that were brought up about additional conditions of approval, potentially looking at a parking management plan. I think clarifying that the conversion to the seventy percent medical office is a good one, and I hear what the adjacent property owner is saying about adding a fence in addition to the hedge there. So I would just put those out for consideration amongst commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosine?
Yeah, along those lines, I heard Mr. Moser bring up some good points in terms of clarity regarding square footage or percentage. I think that'd be a good idea to clarify that language in there. I don't imagine that we're all going to do the math right now, but I know that staff's capable of doing, handling that, so I think that's great. And then clarifying the appeal period issues. I'm interested in though, about the concept of a parking plan. I don't know if we were to request a condition for a parking plan, I think what we're doing if we did that, would be as a safety mechanism? How does, how does staff feel about that?
I'll turn to the traffic engineer too, if he has any thoughts on it, but, you know, I'm not really sure that, I don't know what the parking management plan would say when you're waving twenty-seven spaces and there's no lifts. Unless, Tony, do you have any thoughts on what, no?
Now, I could think, the only thing typically on a parking management plan is you're talking about valet service and how that's going to function, and for the most part, that's what parking management plans discuss when we look at projects. So there probably would be a benefit to have that type of valet parking management plan prepared for this project.
I mean, twenty-seven spaces is a significant number. It's not something, and it's the code. Today, if there was a code amendment that would change this to the, what is believed to be the correct number, I think that makes it a whole lot more palatable, obviously, and we wouldn't be having this, went long-winded conversation, but twenty-seven spaces is twenty-seven spaces, so I'm looking for a relief valve, so that if there was an opportunity to, if there's an issue, this is, there's two things in my mind. One is the code, and the other is operationally, we're going to have seventy percent of these people will be owners as opposed to one owner that you're negotiating with. So I guess there's a set of C.C. and R.'s that'll be created, that'll become some sort of owners' association that will be managing that, and I'm just hopeful that that owners' association is strong enough to be able to manage if there's a future problem. Now, I don't know how we condition something like that, it's like, this is, this is difficult for me in that regard, and that's, that's kind of my position.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosine. Vice Chair.
Thank you. If I may, just, Mr. Moser astutely pointed out, as he typically does, that there is on handwritten ninety-nine parking management plan. And then I am happy, since I already have the mic open, to speak to the ten-day appeal period. There are two different appeal periods under tentative maps. It's a ten-day versus our Title Twenty, and Title Twenty-one is a fourteen-day. We have had some scenarios where individuals have relied on the fourteen-day and missed the deadline for any subdivision map, so in an abundance of caution, I usually put in the lesser appeal period to ensure that they have a full, comprehensive appeal of the project.
Okay, so for me, where we left off was everybody up here scrambling, trying to figure out from the dais, and staff doing calculations. I'm looking around, I see similar algebraic calculations on everybody's notepads. I remember Commissioner Klosztemeyer was also feverishly doing math on her phone last time. So I think a lot of this just really simply does come down to math, and I agree with what has already been expressed, that twenty-seven is a large number. We've also heard from the applicant that their plan is to ultimately probably come back and, you know, strive for that hundred percent conversion, which I think we're probably all supportive of, if in fact the parking is not a problem. So I do want to say, despite what Commissioner Kettin mentioned earlier, I will say, bite your tongue, Commissioner Kettin, because I am glad to see the lift gone. I don't think it would have been used, I think it would have been an eyesore. So thank you to the applicant for getting rid of that, and also the sort of hybrid application that we were looking at before, where you had to kind of see how it goes kind of thing, that didn't, didn't sit well with me. So again, coming back to the math, for me, when you start playing with the numbers, right now it's seventy-thirty, and it's a twenty-seven spot deficit. When you start going back and forth, you know, fifty-fifty, you're at a nineteen parking spot delta. If it's seventy-thirty, you're at eleven. For me, eleven is a lot more palatable. I don't know if that works for the applicant in terms of, you know, how it's underwritten and whether that even makes sense for you and is a viable conversion for you. But that being said, if you did the seventy-thirty and you, or rather, the fifty-fifty even, and you had, and you had the surgery center, I think you'd get there easier than like, you know, just a straight conversion and regular medical space. So I feel like, for me, that's kind of where the split the baby maybe comes in, and maybe we ask the applicant if they're willing to consider, along with the conditions and the other things that have been noted, for neighboring property and signage and all of those things, but I don't know what the, what the temperature is on the rest of the commissioners on reducing the percentage. Again, it sounds like their plan is to come back either way, and if in fact the parking is not a problem, then they could probably get to the numbers that they're ultimately striving for, but if we kind of cap it initially at that number and add a condition for, for some of it to be a, an outpatient surgery center, then we drop a few parking deficit numbers there as well. So that's my thought.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wagen?
I guess to, to go off Commissioner Kleiman's comments, that's the city attorney, is that something we can do kind of to test, you know, where our commissioners kind of stand on this, like do a straw vote, you know, are we, are we ready to vote at the seventy-thirty level, or do we want to see it lower? Because there's obviously some commissioners that might be supportive of the proposal now, but, you know, it sounds like there could be some commissioners who would be supportive of looking at either fifty-fifty or sixty-forty, depending, you know, I don't know what their gauge is on it. We don't know what the applicant's interest is on it, but, you know, part of something I was thinking of while she was saying, the numbers is, could we come back in a year and do what we did when we initially had the proposal with condition ten, I think it was, which isn't on here, but in our previous documents, that said that after a year of operation, we do a parking study, and then we analyze it, and then we say, okay, can they get to the hundred percent? Well, if we had taste on this commission for sixty-forty or fifty-fifty, coming back in a year doing a traffic study and then determining, was that seventy percent really obtainable and wouldn't be a parking impact? So I guess I'm kind of just kind of throwing out there, you know, how can we gauge this commission, move this item along and not have the problems that we faced in previous discussions?
Thank you, Commissioner Wagen. I think how we've done it in the past is that there have been maybe a motion and/or a substitute motion for just the different options that are available, the seventy percent versus the fifty percent. And obviously, that question could be asked of the applicant, if that is something that you, you would like to do beforehand. In terms of, in the future, as Simone mentioned, the applicant can always come back and ask for an amendment to their application, and so that probably with some of the consternation and the reservations that I've heard, is probably the most prudent way to do it, is that this commission approves for one finite amount, and then if the applicant does in fact want to increase that number going forward, then they are free to submit an application to do so.
Okay, and then, so I'd ask the chair, if we could open the public hearing back up, I could ask the applicant what threshold he's supportive of, seventy-thirty your, your limit you want, you want to go to, or, you know? And my other one, I did want to, sorry to interrupt, is the Commissioner Klosztemeyer brought up, the discussion about fencing and what we had talked about. It sounds like from the property owner next door is there's gaps. So could you do landscaping and then do fencing on those gaps? Then you wouldn't have to worry about digging up the irrigation to then have to deal with the new irrigation, you would just have fencing in those gaps, and then you would have landscape and the rest. So that would kind of, I think, kind of.
Let me get the consensus of the commissioners before we reopen the public comments section, yeah. So I, yeah, so, do you have any, Curtis, any questions or comments? I mean, I do, I just wanted to.
I have a concern.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I guess, I see Commissioner Kettin's objection, or objection's not the right word, our concern is on, you know, this is what the code says, and this is the number of spaces, and, you know, us that are in the development world, you have a code from the city, and you just have to build to that. This is a, this is a, you know, a building that's been built, was it seventy-seven, seventy-eight when it was built? And, you know, things change after, what is that, forty-something years down the road, so you see, you know, maybe different uses, and, you know, whatever, if you have an office and, say it was five years ago when people were on the office, and you have a call center in there, and you're, which is going to employ a lot of people, you're going to, you know, overflow parking, and, you know, and that's something you really, you know, can't control. We have our, have our number, and you get a bunch of people in an office, and they're going to fill up your parking. But going through this study, this is, this is kind of my point, going through this study that they did, and our, Tony agrees too, and our staff agree too, that this number is appropriate, and with the uses and what they see, that's going to be in terms of, is medical uses, a lot of it's by appointment only, et cetera. I'm comfortable with the seventy-thirty and with what the, what the parking study, you know, tells us in terms of what they think is appropriate. I think trying to meld that into, I have, I see what Commissioner Rosine's talking about in a little bit with what Commissioner Wagen's talking about, is there some kind of, maybe a check in a year, or something like, was it, was it, was it item ten or something like that on the, on a previous one that, I don't like to use the word audit, because that's official, but maybe it is just another condition, is that there has to be a parking, parking study done in a year, submitted to us as a planning commission, that would go back and maybe that parking, that part of that parking study is that it's, they've gone back a number of days, and the seventy-thirties not doing an undue burden on parking, and it's definitely not bleeding over into adjacent properties, so. Kind of my thought, I just don't know how to, how to, how to engineer that quite yet as a resolution, but, and then a number of the things that Commissioner Klosztemeyer talked about, I agree with a lot of those, should be, if that was part of the motion, I'd be very comfortable with that, on the things that you'd brought up. I don't know if they, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question of staff, you're going through a parking study right now citywide. How long do you think it would actually take to do any type of updates to the code for PC eleven to change any of the parking requirements there?
So this is a planned community text, so it has its own parking rate, but outside of that, we're, so those parts of the town that don't have a PC, we are studying the parking rate.
So there would be no update to the parking ratios in this planned community?
Correct.
Again, I think I'll just go back to the comments I made before, that if you look at the zoning code and the ITE standards, that what they are proposing would be compliant with parking. I do realize that's different than what is in the PC eleven, but I'll leave it with that.
Chairman, I could go along with Vice Chairman Kleiman's suggestion of going fifty-fifty on this, and then take a look back after a couple of years when they start selling them, or remodeling them, and find out, is there, what kind of problems there are, if any? And then they can come back in and talk to staff and commission then about, there's a bigger demand than we thought, we've solved the problem, but to go right out at seventy-thirty, I think is, is dangerous for the city.
Let me ask this of our commissioners, would you like me to open up the public comments section again, that we can have a couple of questions more to the applicant? Would you like me to go and do it? So we'll go ahead and open the public comments up again, and I think we have a couple commissioners with some questions with the applicant, and if there's any additional public comments from the audience, we'll take those as well.
I think the question is, where's the dividing line? So maybe you want to have the property owner speak to that?
We just, I could have him come up. Essentially, we believe based upon the traffic plan, what Commissioner Klosztemeyer said about the ITE, et cetera, et cetera, seventy percent is a realistic number. We also are willing to come back, and I think it would, I think a fair time period would be about eighteen months, since we still got to go through, to county, you know, county procedures and stuff like that to finalize the track map, et cetera. But to go down to fifty would be, I think, detrimental to what, what we want to do out there. Seventy, I think, is a realistic number, it's a number that staff is comfortable with. It's a, it's a number that I think has been acknowledged as realistic. If there are problems prior to that, I'm sure Mr. Light will be in here very quickly telling us what the problem is. If the necessity to make the seventy percent number is conditioned on building the fence there, we'll build a fence. You know, I just think that the seventy, the seventy percent is a realistic, you were talking about underwriting before, that's a realistic business number, and I think if we go below that, it's going to cause some issues.
I hear you, and I think we all understand that you think this. I hear you. And I think we all understand that you think the 70% is reasonable. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be on hearing number three. But if you're reading the dais, you know, it's a gamble.
Obviously, in, in the spirit of compromise, if we want to do 60%, I think we could live with it. I think 50.
So I think the question on the table is, is the applicant willing to do a 50-50 scenario? Because that was what was proposed as an alternative to what was discussed by some of the other commissioners. And if I'm counting correctly, I don't know that you have support at 70-30. I don't know that you don't, but.
Sure. I understand that. I think 50-50 is draconian. I think 60-40 would be a fairer split. But if that's what stat, what the commission wants to do, you guys are up there in the dais and I'm not. So it's, it's up to you. We think that 50 is draconian though and would, we could live with 60, but we'd prefer 70.
Any other questions before, before the applicant?
Just, just go back to that fence thing since it wasn't, public hearing wasn't open at the time. But if there's a gap in that, you're, you'd be okay with doing the fencing in the gap. Wouldn't have to impact the irrigation. So that question on three on the, on the, on the neighbor's email wouldn't even need to be addressed. If you weren't digging anything up, you'd have a fence there.
They have a fence. There's said to be, if you, if, if the condition is we put a fence up, there is no planting, therefore there's no irrigation.
Yeah. Landscaping, if there's a gap, put the fence. That's it.
We have no problem.
And then, and then the signage that says, don't park in your neighborhood.
We have no problem with that.
Perfect. All right. Good.
Just to be clear, there's not much of a concession being made. I mean, you came back, or you came last time and you had this hybrid scenario, plus you had the cost of the lift. Now you have no lift. So of course, you know, building a fence is substantially less of a cost than a lift, right? But you haven't actually moved a whole lot. So I, you know, we're trying to work with you and we're trying to, like I said, sort of split the baby, but.
Well, I, I mean, we're willing to move. And if, and as I said, you know, the percentage is a number that you all are going to have to decide. I can tell you.
So again, 30-70 is where, is where we get to. So to be clear, 30% medical, 70% office is where we get to a delta of 11 spaces. 50-50, I believe, is 19 spaces. But if we did part of those as, you know, whatever percentage, whatever that is, 20% of the square footage is surgery center, then that's the same as office. So again, it's, it's numbers.
It's, it's numbers and.
So just for clarity purposes, your, your proposal's 50% as the medical dental and then 50% as, I guess, general office and/or outpatient surgery? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, I was just saying that you, that the surgery center parks at the same rate as office. So for me, I would say even 30% medical plus the 20% surgery center gets you to 50-50. But if there's support for just a straight 50-50, that doesn't include the additional requirement of the surgery center, I would support that as well.
And if, if 50, if 50-50 is the number that you all think is appropriate, then we have to live with it.
Well, you don't have to live with it. That's what we're trying to understand. Because again, if you've underwritten it and you know that it's not, you know, in the event that you get to 50% and you're overparked and you're not able to come back and ask for more, you know, the property owner has to decide whether that's a process worth going through. So.
Then let me put it, let me, let me rephrase. And I apologize for that. We will live with it. If it's 50-50, we will live with it.
Right. I mean, I think the understanding is from staff's perspective, from, you know, the, the parking consultant's perspective, you get to 50-50 and hopefully you have plenty of spaces in the parking lot and you can count them up and come back to staff and ask for an amendment and, you know, this will all be moved. But I think from what I'm understanding anyway, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of comfort with the 70-30, 27 parking spot deficit. And so I think we're just trying to, three hearings in, trying to throw you.
If I grovel a lot, can we go to 60?
Okay.
No, 50, we would accept 50.
Going to close the public hearing? Because if so.
I think we have, I think Commissioner Kettin has a question. Not none. Commissioner Rosine, did you, did you have a question? Nope. Okay. I know Commissioner Wagon does and then.
Doesn't relate to the public hearing. It would be a question to Commissioner Kleiman.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other comments from the audience, public comments from the audience?
Thank you, Chair Lowry. I, I just wanted to clarify, it was not clear from the comment from the Assistant City Attorney. The idea of the parking management plan was not my invention. The applicant has already submitted a parking management plan, which is a one and a half page document. It's on handwritten pages 99 and 100 of your agenda packet. And that is where they make the promises about the hedge and the signage and even suggest that they might institute a program of assigning quotas to the different tenants as to how much of the parking lot they could use and what parts of the parking lot they could use. So it just seems strange that that would be in their packet and a reason for justifying the reduction in parking, but not made a condition of the approval that they would actually have to follow this plan that is in the packet. So hope that clarifies it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Light again. So appreciate very much your efforts to bring a fair and equitable resolution to the parking. Just a couple, one thought on that and then a couple other final thoughts. Seems to me I'm supportive of the direction of the 50-50 because if it starts at 70 and there's a problem, you can't go backwards. You can start at 50 and then in comeback, they can come back as a future time and ask for more. I, I don't think they can come back a future time and ask for less. So it seems to me to start lower and have an opportunity to increase the medical makes all the sense in the world. I also greatly appreciate the efforts and time considering, you've considered my suggestions or, or asks regarding the fencing and the irrigation. And just to be clear, I wasn't very clear in my email. The, the proposed planting and hedge, what I was referring to was hedges are never solid. And so people can wiggle through them and that creates gaps. So I think the fence needs to be the whole length of the parking lot rather than just in particular spaces where there is no planting. And then the, the, the area of planting is so narrow that the irrigation that is there will be, have to be redone. It's impossible to plant the size of the trees and hedges that it appeared to me that were proposed at the last meeting. So I would just like an opportunity to approve what is being planted there since half of it's going to be on my property. Both approve the planting and the irrigation as half will be on my property. Thanks for your time this evening and your efforts.
Thank you.
Looks like there's no further public comments. So we'll go ahead and close the public comments section or portion and we'll bring it back up. I think Commissioner Wagon, did you have a question or comment? I'm sorry.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to go to this 50-50, 60-40, whatever, you would need to pull out condition number 10, which was in our previous packets to, to, to implement because I think then that gives the owner an opportunity to come back and do a study down the road and say, there's plenty of parking here. Staff is saying there's plenty of parking at 70-30. So they need to have at least the opportunity to prove themselves in a year or however. I think it said no less than X amount of months that condition 10 from the previous packet that we had set in there. And that was the fail safe. That was the fail safe at 100% when we were to only build at 70. And then once 70 was triggered, then the fail safe kicked in to say, let's, there's, there has to be a study to determine if they can add that additional 30%. So staff had in our last discussions, a fail safe in there. And we're not even talking about that fail safe because now we've lowered the threshold. We didn't need to have the fail safe at the 70. Now we're saying 50 and 60, whatever percentage that was. We need to at least give them the opportunity to have that fail safe opportunity to build out because this is, as the applicant's consultant said, draconian to have 50%. It's not a business model that they want to have. Maybe it's sustainable, maybe it's not. But if you, if this commission wants to lower that, I think you should at least give them the opportunity to implement that condition number 10, which was the city's fail safe the last two times that we heard this item. So it's in your, it's in your second big packet that you were provided on there in the previous conditions.
Commissioner, I don't understand. The facilitate the condition. The condition says urgent care is not permitted. What are you saying?
I'm not talking about urgent care. I'm just talking about 70% medical, 30% regular office space. If you're going to lower it to 50 or 60 or whatever these discussions are, we need to give them, the applicant, the opportunity to have a, a study done, a parking study that staff initially approved that said that gave them the ability to move their numbers higher to that threshold that initially was 100%. But now they're willing to be 70%. If you're going to lower it on them, we need to give them the opportunity to get to 70%, which is what they're asking for tonight.
Okay. But you kept referring to item, condition number 10 on page 33. And that's unrelated to what you're talking about.
No, condition number 10 was from two hearings, first, first, last hearing and the hearing before, not to this, because we weren't, we were just talking about 70-30.
Okay. It's in here though. Right now.
But you have another, another binder.
Yeah, I have it. I have it.
And that is on, and I don't know if they've numbered those pages.
We've gone past that, I thought.
Well, if you're, what I'm suggesting is I want to see that added to this. If you guys are going to say 50 and 60, whatever percent that this commission potentially could go on, which, you know, was been already just discussed, I want to see condition 10 added. I would make a substitute motion to that and add condition 10 so they can get to their 70% that they're asking for tonight. And I don't know if I'm making sense or not, but maybe somebody needs to cover if I'm.
My only comment to that, and I apologize for just busting at the microphone, but I don't think anyone's suggesting that they couldn't come back and, and prove that it works. And that would be sufficient and based on real analysis of the actual activity on the site. And at least I didn't hear that there was someone that was saying that we wouldn't allow that. I, I think it would be the right thing to do, to give them the opportunity to come back.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not saying that there wasn't, but we had that conditioned and that was in our first two discussions, that they then got the opportunity after however many months in operation to, to do it. And it was all administratively. Didn't need to come to this commission. So you would have to have a whole nother hearing, a whole nother effort that we're doing tonight to do that. What I'm suggesting is if you guys are going to go down the path of going to 50 or 60% lower than what they're asking for, that condition 10 needs to be re-added. And we as a commission need to give them the opportunity to do the parking study without having to come back to us.
Seems reasonable. All right. All right. Commissioner Kettin? Oh, no question. Okay. Is there any other comments or discussions? If not, I may, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. So I think everyone knows or it seems they could pick up. But I'm comfortable with the parking study that was submitted to staff and, and staff has, has shown their confidence in it. And I think the 70-30 numbers are where we came down to and I'm comfortable with that. I do like Commissioner Klostermeier's additions and I would like to add those on. Well, the motion I would like to make to start there is to approve item agenda number four and all the recommendations on that, on that item number. But I'd also like to include Sarah's thoughts. Are, and I let you, I couldn't remember them as well as you, if you wouldn't mind to add those for me.
It would be two additional conditions to clarify that it's 70% medical office and if there's an associated square footage with that and to add a fence between the two parking lots.
Okay.
Or between the two properties.
And David, help me on something real quick. Is there, I'll go back and I just forget when I was looking at all the, all the conditions. Is there anything in there about coming back with a updated parking, any kind of parking plan? I don't think there was in this last round, is there? Like, like in a year's time or 18 months? Yeah. And I don't know.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Lowry. That was a condition in the previous.
Okay.
Because they were asking for a 100%.
Yeah.
So we wanted to check at 70. But now that medical is reduced to 70, we, we removed that condition from the resolution.
Well, I'd be open to reintroduce that, that condition that they'd have to come back in a year, maybe 18 months, because we don't, titlements can take a while to get their map approved, to come back and, and have a full updated traffic study. For sure it's matching with what, you know, staff believes in, I believe in what the current parking study shows, that, that, that there is not, you know, undue burden, parking wise, on the adjacent property owners. And I, and how that parking struck, how that parking study would look in, in terms of, you know, do they go back three or four times to do checks or how that would look? That, that would be probably direction of staff, but that would, Peter.
I gotta just ask for clarification.
Yeah.
They told us it would take them 18 months to get a map. They can't even sell a unit until then. So how are we even going to know? There won't be a single dentist in there until, or podiatrist.
It's, it's.
It could take three years, you know, to get it, at least going the leasing plan and negotiate, not leasing, but sales. And, and remember, once this thing starts selling, we're, they're going to deal, there'll be other people coming in here saying, hey, I own 2,000 square feet and there's not enough parking. There's going to be a lot of owners instead of neighbors. But my question, back to that is, I don't think 18 months to come back. They won't even have a.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I, maybe more of a 24 months. Maybe that might, Commissioner.
How about at the discretion of the, of the owner when they're prepared to come back?
At some point when they've started selling them.
Right. Give them the opportunity.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to bring that?
I just, in condition 10 of the previous, it just says six months after certificate of occupancies have been obtained. So you could make that argument that once certificate of occupancies, that means they're in there. So then you then count that down from there. So instead of saying some arbitrary number that may or may not happen based on how long it takes them to build the units, then.
So just when you get the first C of O, six months after that?
Yeah. I mean, and again, this was from the fail safe when we were dealing with a different process involved. What I think maybe Commissioner Chair Lowry is asking for is just a call for review to give us an update as to how things are going 12 months or however months after certificates of occupancy have been issued. And that commission at the time can look at it and say.
This was in complaints, yeah.
I don't know what that would solve, but I'm just.
First, before we take the question, let me just ask, did, did you get Commissioner Klostermeier's additional points to the motion?
We did.
Okay, good. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Do we have a second? I think we have a motion on the floor.
I was going to make an alternate motion, actually.
So.
Does that require a second first before that happens?
If we have a second perhaps on that first one, it'd just be helpful to know. Otherwise the motion on that one dies.
I'll make a second to the commissioner.
All right.
So my alternate motion would be, as discussed previously, let the applicant get to 50%. Go ahead and add Chair Wagon's fail safe measure back in there to have them come back. I do agree that it's going to take them a lot longer than a year, even 18 months, probably even 24 months. But have them come back and also add in the signage already discussed as well as the clarification on square footages and the description and the requirement to build a fence as agreed to by the applicant.
What is your percentage?
50%.
I'll second though.
Let's go ahead and call the vote. Do we move back to the original motion?
Correct.
All right. So let's go ahead and call that motion and vote for that.
The motion carries for three with Commissioners Rosine, Commissioner Kleiman and Commissioner Kettin voting no.
and Commissioner Kettig voting no.
Thank you, everyone. I know that was a lot of reading, a lot of meetings over the last three terms. So thanks, appreciate everyone's input, so I know that was.
Chairman, I think the debt ceiling debate was a lot easier than that.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not quite Mitch McConnell or majority leader, but. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then to, I'll get back to my agenda. All right, we'll go ahead and move to item number five, which is the Corona del Mar 76 service station remodel, PA 2019-027. And I believe Chelsea is gonna lead us off on that.
Yes, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Chelsea Craigor with the Planning Division. The project before you is the 76 station remodel and addition at 2201 East Coast Highway. So this is a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit. Coastal development permit, because the property is located in the coastal zone, is to remodel the building and do a 232 square foot addition and also to add on some beer and wine sales where previously alcohol is not sold at the existing property. The existing property is currently the 76 station. It has a small retail component and also includes vehicle repairs. Once again, it's at 2201 East Coast Highway. A lot of us probably drove by it on the way here today. It's right down the road off of Avocado, about half mile away. A lot of the surroundings on three sides and across the East Coast Highway are non-residential. So over here, we have office uses. Of course, over here, we have that commercial center that's next door to us. Right next door, we do have the Corker Liquor. And over here in this area, we do get into the residential, residential areas. The zoning district of the subject property itself is Commercial Corridor. A couple of site photos to get us oriented on the property. That first photo on the top left is the alley, which is located to the side of the property and has that wall there to the right. You'll see some residential construction that's currently going on. In the bottom right picture, we see the next door neighbor, which is the Corker Liquor Store and one of the ingress egress driveways that you see there on the subject property. Two more site photos kinda show you what you're probably familiar with, so our gas pumps. There's eight that are existing there. Apologies for the harsh shadows. It was the afternoon and we have beautiful sunshine. And then that bottom photo, you can see some of the vehicle repair and once again, that residential construction. Some background on the use. So the current use was authorized in the 1970s by a use permit and that allowed the vehicle repair, the gas station and that small amount of retail, and no alcohol at that time. This may look familiar to some of the commission because this item was scheduled, or similar item was scheduled for commission on August 20th of 2020, so a little over a full year ago. At that time, the application was to rebuild the entire structure, so demolish the existing structure, build a new convenience market that was going to be two stories. A number of comments were received and the applicant requested a continuance prior to the hearing. So it didn't actually make it to hearing, it was pulled. The applicant wanted to consider some of those comments and make changes. The project has been revised and what you see before you today is a smaller scale project with a lower height. The project was presented before the Corona del Mar Residents Association and the CDMRA provided a letter of support, which is included in your packet. So some details of the project, as I mentioned, it's remodeling the existing building, including doing a 232 square foot addition, the addition of a type 20 ABC license, which authorizes beer and wine sales for off-site consumption. The proposed hours of operation for the convenience store are 6:00 AM to midnight with alcohol sales ending at 11:00 PM and the fuel stations remaining, or the fuel pumps remaining operational for 20 more, 24 hours. The project also includes a modification of service station standards, service station standards. So the site plan in blue at the top there, that's the existing structure. And just to the left of that, hatched and in yellow, that's the area of addition that's being proposed. The green that you see on the site plan is the proposed landscaping area. Over to the left in the green landscape, you'll see a bit of yellow here. That's the proposed air and water dispenser. We also have the trash enclosure. We have three driveways, so the site currently has three driveways and it will continue to have three. And then here's our fuel pumps in the middle here, outlined in blue. And like I said, those are proposed to remain unchanged. The project proposes 10 parking spaces, which does meet the code required number of parking spaces for the proposed project. So here we have the floor plan of what's proposed. Once again, the existing structure or the footprint of the existing structures in blue and the area of addition is to the left in yellow. The, it does have some walk-in coolers and walk-in freezer. These are for storage, it's not accessible to the public. So you come in here at the bottom, here's the entry. And to the side, to the right, we have the cashier, the sales clerk. There is a condition of approval that's included in the draft resolution that requires that the shelving and the insides of the sales floor be positioned such that the sales clerk is visible from outside the building. These are the proposed elevations. It gives you an idea of the design of the building, it is modern. The proposed height, the maximum height at this architectural feature, which is this red piece here, is 23 feet 6 inches. The Commercial Corridor zoning district allows a maximum height of up to 32 feet. The building does provide articulation and modulation that prevents monotony. So I mentioned before that there is a modification of service station standards that are being requested. So the first of those standards is the side setback. Now, I want to mention that the Commercial Corridor zoning district allows for zero setbacks along the front, rear and sides. So the zoning district allows for a zero setback. Service station standards apply additional standards to service stations in particular. And those service station standards require a 10-foot side setback for the, the building and a 10-foot setback for the air and water. So in this case, the applicant is proposing to maintain the current condition of the building and the air and water dispenser. So that would be zero setback for the building and about a four-foot setback for the air and water. Another of the modifications being requested is for lot size. Once again, this is from the service station standards. And the minimum lot size is based, the minimum lot size required is based on the number of fuel stations and the floor area of the proposed building. Based on those numbers, the minimum required lot size is about 14 and a half thousand. And in this case, it's 13,800 approximately, so about an 800 square foot difference. A couple of the other modifications are related to landscaping and all detail is a little bit more with the landscape plan in front of us. So one of the, one of the modifications being requested is for the perimeter landscaping. The service station standards require five-foot minimum width of landscaping around the perimeter of the building. So while that's provided in a lot of areas, doesn't quite hit it, get it right here, which is between these two driveways. Also along here, it's varied, so parts of this area provide the minimum five feet, parts do not. And of course, along these property lines where the building is adjacent to the property line. Another landscaping requirement is 15% of the total site being landscaped in this case. 9.7% of the, of the site is landscaped. We also have requirements for the quantity of landscaping, so the quantity of trees and shrubs. And in this case, this property line right here is required to have four trees. And they managed to get three in there. But the other property lines do include the minimum number of trees and shrubs. The application includes a request for a type 20 beer and wine off-sale license. Whenever we have an alcohol license, we do request input from the police department. And the police department did provide a detailed memo, which is included in your packet. This table is pulled from that memo. It is an example of some liquor stores, gas stations, both with alcohol and without, and calls for service in 2019, 2020, and up to August 2nd in 2021. The traffic-related calls for service have already been removed. But so these are kind of some, some numbers to see what we, what we see with different types of uses and when we add alcohol. The police department also recommends conditions of approval, as does the planning department. And here is an example of some of the conditions that are included in the draft resolution. For instance, staff is required to go through a training program prior to selling alcohol. No onsite consumption is allowed, no single containers or small wine bottles, no exterior advertising of alcohol. It's required to have a security camera that provides recording. And alcohol sales are recommended to cease at 11:00 PM. That last one is bolded, that, that condition is not included in your draft resolution, but staff would like to recommend locking the alcohol after 11:00 PM in order to kind of enforce that sales, alcohol sales ending at 11:00 PM. As currently written, the draft conditions would allow the market to stay open until midnight with alcohol sales ending at 11:00. And so that locking of the alcohol might help to enforce that. The project is exempt from CEQA under section 15301, which is Class 1 existing facilities. And staff recommends that you conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt under Class 1, and adopt a resolution approving the coastal development permit and the use permit. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is Hameed Kianipur. He is here with his team and representative. And I believe they have a staff presentation, and I am also available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Does any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? Oh, all right, Sarah?
Thank you very much for that presentation. There were a number of modifications that you walked through and I kind of broke them up into two categories between the building and landscaping. Since there's just a renovation of the building, when the building was built, I assume it was compliant with the zoning codes and setbacks that were in place at that time. So I don't, I don't think it makes sense to modify the building out there to now be compliant. Maybe I'm misunderstanding that. I think that is just the essence of the request for that modification.
That's correct. The, the request is to allow the, the building to stay in line with the existing legal non-conforming condition.
Okay. And then for the landscaping, is, are the landscaping planting areas gonna remain as they are today?
There, there will be some changes. There's some changes a little bit to the site layout, including how the parking is laid out. So there will be some changes to the landscaping, but it's quite similar to how it is today.
Okay. My next point is I understand that as a commission, we are here to look at the approval of a coastal development permit and a coastal use permit. I have some concerns about the building elevations. I understand that we are not a body that opines on design review, but maybe if you could just explain to us what the process is at the city for any type of design review on projects like this. My main concern is that the elevations of the building, in my opinion, don't really fit with the character and the essence of what the Corona del Mar Village is.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Klafter-Meyer. So the city does not have design review. We do have some design guidelines. You know, we, it's, it's really a subjective process on the design. Our code does say quality materials. We do try to provide feedback and input to the architects about the design. Sometimes some designers are pretty adamant about the design that they want to propose. I know this applicant has had multiple versions of the designs that we've seen, some very modern, more modern than what you see tonight. And so we've, we've tried to guide the applicant on the design, but ultimately, it's really gonna be the property owner, the designer's choice of what the design is. And we really don't have say, assay from a staff level or even from the commission level. You could, but you always can make suggestions and provide some input.
Thank you.
Follow-up to that, do we have a color and material board? I too couldn't tell if this is going to be made, you know, metal coating, plaster, what type? Is it smooth? Is it stuck, you know, dash? And how does all that work?
We do not have a materials board with us, but the applicant can speak to the building materials.
Isn't that normally a requirement? So you know what you're getting?
We do.
Is this wood painted or in a block?
Usually for new development, required the material board. This is just a remodel.
And, and just a remodel?
It is a remodel.
Okay.
Commissioner Wigan, did you have? You didn't know? Vice Chair.
I'm just curious, the, the six exceptions here noted in the staff report, are those all of the standards required for gas stations? In other words, is he asking for exceptions 100% of the standards that are required?
No, there are a number of standards that are required that, I don't, I don't have them detailed here, but, but the answer is no, it's not all of the standards.
Just those that are laid out are the exceptions.
Got it, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and declare ex parte communications and we'll start down there with Commissioner Rosine.
I met with the applicant onsite at the property.
I too met with the applicant onsite.
None.
I spoke to the applicant about setting up a meeting onsite and we never had it, but I toured the built property twice on my own.
None for me.
I met with the applicant, yeah, the property owner applicant back in 2020 and then I spoke with the applicant's consultant recently.
I spoke with applicant's consultant and I met onsite today with the owner.
Thank you. Now we'll go ahead and open the public comments section of the meetings and we'll start with the applicant. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, this Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Hameed Kianipur. I have lived in Corona del Mar for 25 years, raised my family here and bought this gas station back in 2003 and I've been operating the gas station since then. The business that we have is in auto repair right now and it's on, in a decline and it's not a viable business anymore. Most of the people here in Corona del Mar drive very expensive cars and they're very hard to repair and work on them. And they don't trust that way, Corona Gas Station. They're going back to the dealers, therefore, there is not enough business for us. So I have decided to convert this to a convenience store and I'm asking you guys to approve my project and allow me to have a place to work at and still serve the community.
Thank you. Hameed is, my name's Scott Piotr. I'm Hameed's architecture project manager on, on the project. And Hameed had asked me to get involved with this project when he first submitted this back in 2019. But I wanted to make sure that you knew Hameed. He's been in the neighborhood, he lives in the neighborhood. He's been involved with the Business Improvement District before it was dissolved for, what, near six years?
Eight years.
Eight years. And he's been a, a participating member of the community for a long time. But I would like to walk you through a little bit of the history and the process that brought us to where we're at today. And if you look at your screens, you saw the existing site as staff made the presentation. You've got the service bays, you've got tandem parking in the, you can see in the upper right-hand corner of the site there. You've got parallel parking along the west side or the, I'm sorry, the left side, which is actually the east side. And you've got one, a couple of spaces out there by the corner kiosk, we call it the pin corner. And you could see service bays, you've got three service bays going and the little C store along with the cashier on the existing building. It was built back in 72, but the, the site has been a service station since the early 50s. It was redone in 72 with that CUP and Hameed took ownership of it in the early 2000s. Existing canopy was replaced about six years ago, seven years ago, and that is proposed to remain unchanged. The original supplemental back in February of 2019 included tearing down the existing store, which you could see in the lower right-hand corner, and proposed replacing it with a two-story structure. The first story was going to be convenience store. The second story was going to be storage and a couple of small offices. When we did that, we changed the parking, got rid of the tandem parking spaces and provided, at that time, I believe, 12 spaces. We had a very contemporary design. We looked at this as an opportunity as the entrance to the village to really make a statement when you're coming. statement when you're coming in. And rather than a lot of the architecture that tends to look very similar as you drive down PCH, especially some of the newer architecture, we thought it would be fun and exciting to have something that would make a statement. At that time, we, Hameed actually hired a couple of different, hired a designer to come up with several different designs. This was the one that we proposed originally. That would be more of a bird's eye view from the corner on that design. Second time around, we incorporated some of the comments from staff. We incorporated some of the comments from the design perspective that we got back from some of the commissioners at that time, as well as staff. We looked at and reviewed the code with staff, and due to parking and other issues, we decided that we eliminated all the storage on the second floor. So the only thing on the second floor was 350 square foot of office. We also changed the look of the design to be a lot less iconic. It was, we also took advantage and created a lower rooftop area towards the residential side. So even though it was two stories in the front, it was one story towards the residential side. This would be more of a front perspective of it. This does not accurately reflect the, the back corner there next to the residential, which was reduced. And third time around, which is the, the design that actually came in your packet back in August of 2020, would, we, the second floor design went up to 390. We refined the design a little bit further. Most of the changes between our second and third seminal were technical in nature, addressing some of the traffic concerns and some of the security concerns. The design pretty much stayed the same, and this is just another view of basically the same design. We also got a lot of comments from the, from the public. We got comments from commissioners, and we decided at that time to, even though we were ready for hearing, to go ahead and step back, take a look at the design, get more input from the community. And that's what we've been doing the last 13 months. Based on what we had, and we postponed that hearing, we eliminated the second floor. We thought this design would be kind of nice, but the 1930s look just didn't quite fit. We eliminated the 711, and Hameed went to independent branding, so it will be CDM Market or some name along those lines. And he will act as an independent store owner. We worked with residents on the design. We worked on, with CDMRA, with the, with the Chamber of Commerce, and many of current customers and neighbors getting their input, to the point where we're very proud to say that we've got their recommendations for approval for you tonight. The new design, as staff pointed out, we changed the design to be less iconic and more similar to the architecture that's happening in CDM. People liked the existing building with some of the comments that we got back, so we kept the existing building and decided only to add to it, which is the cross-hatched area there in the upper left-hand corner, which staff showed you before. It amounts to a 232 square foot addition. We revised the parking, we added to it, we got rid of the tandem parking, we organized it better, we provided ADA, ADA access, and we enhanced and added additional landscaping from what's there today. Even though it's substandard to the ideal development standards in the code, it's much better than it is today in that it's spread out more. We're going to replace the, all the landscape materials with good, high-quality, drought-resistant material. And, and frankly, the landscaping that's there now is very tired. So the intent is to meet the intent of the code, provide the landscaping around the perimeter of the building, and basically get the best bang for the buck. Where we really are lacking as far as the percentage is the area that we really can't provide landscaping in, and that's the boundary area and then behind the building and the side of the building. The proposed elevations, which are in your packet, again, it's a little bit less iconic, it's more part of CDM. You're going to see, the materials are metal panels, Alucoban, to answer some of your questions. The overhang is going to be a suspended overhang with cables that will also be steel and/or high-quality impregnated wood. We haven't decided on the final material. You could see we bumped up the design at the entryway to kind of give it some identity, and we've kind of added, call it a, a tombstone, if you will, on the right-hand side of the building, where you have the most visibility around the canopy to help identify the building. So even though the building is 23 feet high, which is nine feet lower than the height limit, most of the building is a good 10 feet below the height limit. So we kept the building profile as low as we could, and basically just put a flag out there in the form of a little higher part of the building to help the passerby see that there is a market there, there is a convenience store as part of the project now. We already went over the fact that it's independent branding, and we eliminated the second floor. And with the different scale and the overhead, overhang, et cetera, we feel that it is much more of a pedestrian scale, which is Corona del Mar. This is a good perspective of it. You could see the steel overhang in the front, and a little bit more detail on that. That's the, that's the part that's suspended from above. The parapet around the roof, it's around the existing roof, will help screen the rooftop equipment so that you're not going to see rooftop equipment. And that's the end of that presentation. As you see, Hameed has taken a long, long time, and in fact, at, at frankly, difficult times business-wise, because once the, once it was known that the mechanic's bays were closing, business went away. So he has had a minimally operating business as far as the mechanic's bays, and he's very anxious to start construction. So we're very glad to be before you today, but we feel like it's a project that the, the community likes and supports, and we're here and available to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner K.
Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. Will that steel eyebrow be inserted with glass to, for elements to come down, so rain doesn't come on in, but it still has an eyebrow?
So, I'm sorry, say the question again?
You know, the steel framed around there, will that, I call it an eyebrow, will that be, will there be glass inserts above for weather protection or just opening?
No, the, the ribbon that's red-colored around.
No, no, the black.
Right. So the ribbon that's red-colored around provides a little bit of rain protection, but there's no intent to put glass in, in the steel structure at this point. We will probably use that structure to put LED lighting so that we can light the building and not see any light sources.
And go back to the front elevation for a minute, even though we're not directing anything. Just as I'm putting my eye on this, I would have raised up the entry element taller so it stands out a little better. Just a question.
Noted.
I have others, but I'll bring them up when we discuss the site plan.
Commissioner Wagen.
I, the PD put together a, a report, and it kind of went over some of the calls for service in the last few years on some similar locations nearby. We had a similar discussion to this. I don't know how many commissioners were on the commission at the time, but when we did a redo of the property over on Superior, it was a 76 station. And consistently, I, I want to try to stay that way in the way that I kind of view these things. I like the idea of enhancing. I understand that the business model needs to have some type of alcohol sales to stay afloat, to make you want to do the changes that you're looking to do. I know that the liquor store next door, you know, has obviously been there for a long time. I walked the perimeter today, and I probably took 10 pictures of many tiny little alcohol bottles of, you know, different hard alcohol. So you're not selling hard alcohol, so that's not, that's not a concern on your application. But there is an issue there. There's a bus stop right in front. The transportation center at OCTA is, is less than a mile away, which is just down the way from here. And there's a lot of folks that come down looking for alcohol, and that bus stop does attract some type of attention. I've seen them there before, and I know that there's potential for increased calls for service. So I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned of the undue concentration in the neighborhood of alcohol, but I recognize that you have a business model that needs to, to be sustainable. So, you know, I, I discussed this the last time that we had a similar type of item, and I wanted to see the, the, the sales time be a little, a little lower than 11 o'clock. And so I'd like to perhaps discuss, you know, a 9 o'clock shut off for, at least for a year, to kind of, to see how we would function at that location, and then reevaluate with the commission a year from them to say, okay, the calls for service really aren't that significant, and 11 o'clock is what they originally asked for, and 11 o'clock shouldn't be an issue because we're not seeing it at 9 o'clock, so we could, we could come back and, and add to that. How supportive would you guys be on, on something like that, seeing that, you know, there's three liquor stores on the street already, there's already access to some beer and wine in addition to that up and down the street? I just, I don't want to give more opportunities for, you know, behavior that potentially could impact the neighbors that are really right there. And I already can see it based on the litter that I picked up today just on my walk. So I want to, I want to be recognizing to the residents, but I also want to be recognizing to you as a business owner that you're not going to make these changes if you can't have a business model that's sustainable. So I'm just trying to, you know, kind of weigh the interest of, of where you guys might be on something like that. And I don't know where my commissioners feel on something like this, but I throw it out there to kind of start the conversation.
I think one of the issues that I want to bring up is that we won't be selling single-serve or small bottles of hard alcohol, so that would prevent the homeless and people that would be misusing alcohol for that matter. The alcohol that we sell will be taken home to be consumed, but we're open for, to a flexible, a more flexible hours.
I appreciate that, and, and I don't know where this commission feels on, on this particular issue. For me, consistency is a big deal, and that was something that I, I had to actually go back into the books and look to see where I stood on that, but it was a, a similar type of discussion. We were converting a, a gas station that didn't have any alcohol sales in an area that had already establishments that were selling alcohol, and then they were asking for something kind of similar, not entirely similar, but close. So I wanted to, to at least get that conversation started before we, we delve into this more.
We're open to that.
Commissioner Wagen, one, one thing that would be nice, if we were to do something like that, if you're going to have another evaluation after a year, is if the owner didn't have to come back before the commission for that, if you could leave it at the discretion of, say, Newport Beach Police Department. That way, you're not adding an additional administrative burden to the client.
Sure, and I'd be open if staff is what they think would be the best avenue, if it's staff administratively, or if it's in concert with PD, or if it's strictly PD. I'm happy with that. Sure.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rosin.
Thank you. So I can tell that the, the color scheme, realizing this isn't part of our purview, but I'm going to, I can't help myself, takes a nod to the 76 color scheme, and we discussed this, and for whatever reason, in the back of my mind, I was thinking that there was a rebranding effort that was going to take place here. Shell sticks out in my mind, which is a completely different color scheme. And so my question is, is that, do you anticipate a change to the color scheme based on this? Where, or could you describe your expectation on branding and what, what's going to take place there?
I'll let you address branding.
Sure. This is the color that we've worked with all along, and it's on the rendering already. We will be branding Shell at some point down the road, and the colors go together. This is, it fits with Shell colors. Now, I don't know if Shell would allow us to keep this color, or they will ask us to change it. I don't know that. And we're really not set on this color, so we could change it if we have to.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right. Secretary Elmar?
So I think the idea of the project is, is logical. I think it makes sense, and, and I think, kind of, as, in terms of the idea of the project, I, I like the idea of it, and, and the findings and everything. I'm going to kind of piggyback on to Commissioner Rosin's concerns. I, I guess maybe a question for Scott. What is, what is your interpretation of the overall design aesthetic of the CDM Village? How would you categorize it?
Oh, eclectic. There's not, no real design theme, but I will say that most of the architecture is pedestrian in scale. So it all depends on the era that you're looking at. Even, even the homes you can look at, tell by the architecture of it approximately when it was built, because there were certain styles were popular at certain times. So I'm not sure that I would say that there's any kind of a theme. I mean, you see Cape Cod to ultra-modern. So there isn't a, a theme of CDM other than, I know I enjoy it and use a lot of it and walk around the, the village a lot. So to me, keeping a pedestrian scale is probably the most important thing, which is hard to do when you've got a gas station that serves basically automobile traffic. So that's why one of the themes was to try and keep that as a pedestrian scale.
And how would you categorize this architecture?
I would say it's very contemporary.
Modern, contemporary?
Modern, contemporary.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's, I think this is, and again, I know our purview and whatnot, but the color scheme and the elevations and the mod, I, I seem to struggle with a little bit, you know, and I think of these, I don't think of a gas station as a statement piece, even though the location is technically on one side of the village. I, I would like to see something more along the lines of like, maybe like a zinc, something just, at least the tones and the colors, a little more neutral, throttle back a little bit, so it flows, blends in, it's not, it's not, it's not standing out. I think that would.
Are you referring to the red?
The, the red is a struggle, yeah. The red, the red really is a struggle for us. I just think it, I mean, I don't really think it flows with Shell, at least what I'm looking at here, and so I would like to kind of more flow, not with a, with a gas station, more with the, with the, what was going on in the city. So that's kind of my thought process on that.
One thing that's difficult, excuse me for interrupting, Commissioner, is, this is a smaller building, and it's in the back of the site, behind the canopy. And, you know, this element, the red element you're referring to, is only about 18 inches square, call it. It's not a huge element. It may appear that way because we're looking at it just as the building in, in a perspective or rendering, but it's not huge.
What's 18 inches? The overhang?
That, yeah, right, that ribbon, that red ribbon is about an 18-inch square.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it does look bigger. And then how, how tall is the CDM Market sign?
That is the tallest part of the building. That's the 23 foot 6 element, or 20 foot 38, I believe.
So I think from the design perspective, just, that was kind of my thoughts and sentiments. Piggyback on Mr. or Commissioner Wagen's comments about the alcohol sales. I was more concerned about the 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM than I was the 11:00 PM. So I don't know who is buying alcohol at 6:00 AM.
Hopefully not to drink then.
Yeah.
They're picking it up as they pick up their gas on the way to, to work or whatever, but not to.
On the way to work, yeah.
Not to drink at work, but on their way.
Uh huh. So I was, I was actually a little more, maybe we can talk about that a little further, but I just didn't think 6:00 AM was appropriate for alcohol sales at a gas station.
Question, Kenny? Staff first. The application's, yeah, for the liquor license for beer and wine, so there's no alcohol of any size, mini or half gallon?
There's no, there's no liquor, but there is beer and wine.
Beer and wine only, okay. That's clarified, because I heard we're not going to sell the little mini bottles, but I understand they want to, you want to keep the 76 lollipop sign. Is there need for that? Could you get a better architecturally designed, free-standing, blade sign?
Sure, we could, of course.
Out of that?
Yeah, we'll be, we're open to that. We'll do that. We'll take the 76 ball away, and we'll put a monument sign, I mean, a post.
Yeah, monument, vertical.
A two-sided sign.
Yeah.
If you're going to pick up this architecture, he can design something with that on the corner that gives you the rates of the gas and.
Of course.
I'm sure with the rebranding, there'll be a new sign program established that we'll have to come back for approval on.
We don't see it. Staff does. We're, I, I'm just saying, I, I hope that we can condition out that lollipop.
No, it's a great suggestion, and we'll do that.
I have questions about the site plan, but when do you want those discussed, Chairman?
Let's continue on with questions and then discuss, is that?
Yeah.
Is that more direct to the applicant or just more direct to staff?
Well. Well, everybody in the room. If you want, I'll talk about it right now.
Yeah, if applicant, that way we can have the applicant up, and they can answer all their questions. So, go ahead.
Right, okay. If you can put up the site plan, I'll talk about it. Good.
Put up the landscape plan. It's easier to read.
The diagonal parking on the left side of the site plan we just had, I would narrow that driveway. That's a two-way drive right there, and now it's going to be one-way. I'd like to see that driveway torn out and narrowed, and that would extend that triangular landscape area a little further out, because you don't want people to pull in there. You're designing this so they, it's out only, not in. And so, that's, staff can, you know what I'm talking about? Narrow down that drive so that it's only an exit. I'd like to see the air and water that's over here on that, next to the Corker. Can't you put that out by this lonely one stall out by the corner? Out there, I mean, that's not used that often, but I'm afraid if somebody's parking in there, and you want to get air and water, you're not going to get it. Oh, I'm pointing to those, you know where it is. It says on the site plan, air and water, yeah, right up here. You know where it is.
Yes.
Could that be moved out near the 76 pole in that one parking stall, number 10?
We thought that was the best place for it, so...
Okay, just a thought.
If you think it's better to move over there...
I'm just saying, it seems to be in conflict with somebody shopping, if you call it that. Let's see. I was concerned about that block wall going down the alley. It almost looks like it's teetering. Is that going to be reinforced, changed, taken down? I'm afraid if you do a lot of construction there, it could go. You might want to look at it.
It's actually in pretty good shape. And despite the appearance, it is still plum.
And are you going to be the operator of the convenience market, or is it going to be a brand?
No, no. It's going to be a local market, and I'll be operating it.
You think it'll be an upgrade from the typical conventional mini mart? Like, maybe have small deli sandwiches and all that?
Well, we won't prepare sandwiches on site, but we will have already-made sandwiches that we will serve, just like Trader Joe's.
I was concerned too about, I saw your lighting plan, and I know it's all coming off below the canopy, but your edges, you might want to add, we might want to add some lighting. I see you have the one pole over there, next to the handicap, where the trash comes in out. There might need to be another one behind that. I see the symbol, but I don't know if you're going to put it there, because I didn't see any edge sight lighting anywhere on your property today. I saw these little things about...
You're right. You're right. Commissioner, we'd like to put a tall light on the side of the Corker to light up the driveway, the one-way driveway. And we'd like to put one another corner to light up the other side of the canopy.
Okay, appreciate that. I heard Scott say that all the landscaping is going to be removed and redone.
Correct.
All right, that's good. It needs, I agree. Sight lighting, all right. I don't think I had any other ones. You might need to put wheel stops, so you don't, over those diagonal ones, but that's a traffic department's issue. All right, thank you. Those are the comments.
Any other questions down there? Vice Chair?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. So, I think you said you bought the property in 83, is that right?
2003.
Oh, 2003, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And aside from replacing or updating that canopy, have you done any other improvements to the property?
None.
Okay. And then, what do you currently sell? And I know it's a small, much smaller space, but what's the convenience store? Just gum and lot of tickets and...
So those, water, chips, candy, just small stuff.
Last question for you, the applicant. Aside from the modern, super-modern design and the second story, as well as kind of removing the 7-Eleven affiliation, I'm trying to understand how this application is materially Was the previous application, when it was affiliated with 7-Eleven, was that a 24-hour operation, proposed?
7-Elevens are open 24 hours, but we were willing to limit the hours, but the community didn't want a 7-Eleven, and we heard a lot of opposition to that. Therefore, we took 7-Eleven away, and we decided we won't partner with them.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand how just removing 7-Eleven from the scenario changes what we're looking at here. But we can certainly talk more about that after... Are we going to bring Wendy Jo up, or is that after we close the...
We can bring him up afterwards, yeah, if I'd like to, for more questions, yeah. Any other questions? Looks like there's none. I'll ask the applicant, are they, are you agreeable to the conditions that were in the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And to address Commissioner Kleiman, the building is the significant change. The use is still a convenience store, but the building went from two stories to one story, and reduced square footage by almost 500 square feet, 400 and change. So, that was the main change between August, and then obviously, the actual design of the building.
And another thing was, I think 7-Eleven has this bad reputation that attracts homeless. So, a lot of the residents were scared of 7-Eleven coming to the neighborhood and attracting a lot of homeless. That was the major thing we heard from the residents. So, that's why we didn't want 7-Eleven as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to call, see if Wendy Jo would come up during the public comments, if that's fine, for a few questions? Our vice chair will start us off.
Good evening. Thank you for being here and for your report provided. I'm going to just fire them at you. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. First question is, other convenience stores and calls for service related, as well as, well, I'll start there.
Put that slide back up.
Put that back up, yeah.
So, I, I think what's important to note is that, so the top two, 76, oh, they're out of order, is how I have it on my sheet. In the general area, we, I compared stats to Corker Liquor and Papa's Liquor. Those were relatively low in calls for service. I'm thinking because it doesn't have the, I assume it doesn't have the big name attached to it. Like the applicant stated, there is some coralization between the bigger names, Circle K, 7-Eleven, and more activity. I think also because they're open 24 hours. What's important to note is, it's really hard to get, we took some gas stations or 7-Elevens with no alcohol sales and compared them to alcohol sales. It's difficult to get a very, you know, direct comparison, because we're also dealing with areas in the city, right? I think the closest one that we can really look at would be Terrible Chevron, which is on the corner of Jamboree and San Joaquin. That's probably also the closest in location to the transportation center. I think probably they're, you know, different ways, they're probably relatively the same distance away. And that has, you know, much fewer calls for service. In 2020, they had 85 calls for service. In 2021, year-to-date, that Chevron had 58 calls for service. This location with no alcohol had 11 calls for service in 2020, and eight calls for service year-to-date. We do anticipate that number rising, at least doubling with alcohol sales. We do anticipate an increased burden on police resources with alcohol sales. The reason why we went with 11:00 PM is because that is our codified delineation of late hours. Generally, we see an increase in alcohol-related crime after 11:00 PM. 60% of our DUIs occur between the hours of 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned the transportation center. I think we all know that can be a problem, and as we're, you know, talking about these related issues, can you just speak a little to that?
So, I think that's one of our greatest concerns, is transportation center. Right now, you know, there's a heavy population of homelessness in the transportation center. I think this would be, like I said, this one in Terrible's on Jamboree would be the closest later-night alcohol establishment to that transportation center. I would, I would say that the majority of our violent crime in the city right now, our batteries are due to or being caused by our homeless population. And so, what we, having alcohol near that transportation center is a concern for us.
So, are you finding that those batteries are also alcohol-related? In other words, intoxicated, and then the battery occurs, there's a tie?
I would, anecdotally, generally, our transient population is commonly under the influence.
And then, do we know, or do staff know, Corker and Papa's, the hours of operation, what time they close?
So, Corkers, when I, I don't know what their CUP says. When I wrote the report, Corkers was closing at 8:30, and I actually just Googled it tonight, and they're closing at 9:00 PM now.
And then, Rite Aid, they sell alcohol as well, don't they?
They do have an alcohol license. I don't know what time they close.
Okay. So, we've got, just along that section, that corridor in the village alone, we've got quite a few opportunities to pick up alcohol on the go.
We do.
I guess my last question is really, you know, we often bring you up when we have these applications and talk about the cumulative effects, and, you know, what the police department's view or position is on things. But we've never had you, and maybe that's because whenever we are seeing something, it's because staff and PD is supportive of it. But I've never heard PD say, yeah, this is not...
This is a concern.
Right, this is a concern, we really wouldn't recommend it. Or, you know, or to your earlier point, yes, the standard is 11 o'clock, but we would really suggest, you know, 9:00, as Commissioner Wigan recommended, or, you know, 8:00, if these other related businesses next door are closing earlier.
I am sympathetic. PD is sympathetic to the applicant creating, you know, going through this remodel process. We obviously want his business to be successful. We always want our applicants to be successful. In this situation, we are absolutely in favor of limiting alcohol sales. 9:00 PM would be fantastic if the applicant is agreeable to that. I think what I would like to point at, you know, when we're discussing businesses with alcohol sales as opposed businesses that don't have alcohol sales, Circle K would be a very good comparison. You know, like I said, they are a big name, so it's hard to compare, because, you know, Corker Liquor and Papa's don't have that same large calls for service. But, you know, in 2020, Circle K, that was in the Triangle Lot at Superior and the highway, they had 153 calls for service. They closed down, and that location had 12 calls for service. It's a huge difference when we're looking at alcohol sales for a liquor store. And comparing it to Commissioner Wigan's comments about 1461 Superior, that was the gas station that we approved a few years ago, I think it was in 2017. That location, when we approved alcohol sales, their calls for service are still relatively low compared to other businesses, but they did double. So, we're looking at potentially doubling police calls for service, or doubling the burden on police resources in that general area.
So, is their closing time 9:00, or serving time 9:00?
I believe they, that Chevron...
Well, what do you attribute?
I don't recall. Was it midnight?
The 76 station on Superior, alcohol sales end at 10:00 PM.
So, I think, you know, like we said, 11:00 PM was an agreeable solution, any way in which the applicant and the commission would agree on, and myself included with so is staff, fewer alcohol hours. Obviously, the police department would be in favor of that.
And one last question, sorry. The, like, Circle K, for example, or 7-Eleven, is anecdotally, or if you can speak to the data, do you think that those calls of service are much higher because of the brand name, or just because of the nature of what, you know, the fact that they're selling alcohol, and people know that they can get alcohol there? I mean, what's the distinction?
It's really hard to say. I think the brand name does go a long way with that, but in this situation, I think it's a lot just location. I'm looking at, you know, Papa's Liquor and Corker Liquor. CDM is very different than, you know, 20th and Balboa, or the Triangle Lot. It's a very different area. It's really...
It is today, but maybe not after we approve this. It will be. Okay. Thank you so much. I don't know if anyone else has...
Secretary?
Quick question. Are any of these other ones directly next door to a liquor station, a liquor store? Any of the other gas stations?
None to my knowledge.
I think it's kind of unique. Go ahead.
Circle K was. They were next to Bell Harbor. Bell Harbor.
I mean, I've lived in the village for most of my life, and I see a lot of people parking in the gas station and going into the liquor store, like, all the time. So, do you, would you estimate, because it is literally adjacent, joining a mall almost to the liquor store, that increase, that pop in calls versus, because it's already there, right? Are you think it's going to, you think you're really going to see a dramatic increase in calls for alcohol next to a liquor store, or people are already there?
I think as, the closer we get to late-night hours, we're going to see an increase in calls. Corker, like I said, closed at 8:30 during, I'm assuming they were closing at 8:30 during the pandemic. 9:00 now are their hours. So, between 9:00 PM and 11:00 PM, say, I do think there's going to be an increase.
What about in the morning? 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM?
Typically, we don't keep stats on morning, because we don't see a large problem of crime related to alcohol in the morning.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Katty?
Wendy, I didn't see the Shell Station on Jamboree and San Joaquin on here. I know they have, I'm told they have alcohol sales, beer and wine at least.
You're right. I did not include them.
So, it may not be an issue. And that's near residential as well.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
Any more questions?
So, that 7-Eleven on Superior has a ton of calls for service. They're 24/7, right?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then, on page 443, the schematic kind of shows the floor plan of how the store would operate. Would you suggest them closing one of those doors at a certain time of night to prevent any type of, you know, behavior that we would be concerned with? There's a door on the right-hand side... There's a door on the right-hand side and then the front of the store, so where those parking stops, there's an ADA stall, obviously, that would be helpful to them, but then there's the sliding door in the front. So there's two doors going at kind of once. Do you think that would be advisable at a certain point, maybe to have one of those locked?
I can't speak to fire code, but yes, 100%. I think the other issue was, is how we're going to, if the market does stay open later than alcohol sales, I think we really need to nail down how and which they're going to lock the fridges or even block so that they're no longer in view.
How does it work at the 76 that we saw, I guess, several years ago? I pulled up the article and it says that we'll be padlocked, but, you know, beer's easy to do that, I think, with those, but obviously wine isn't always refrigerated. So you would, you know, what, you put up cables or, you know, things at night, is there some type of shelf? I'm sure there's got to be some device these stores have come up with over the years.
Just the cases are locked?
Yeah, I'm sure it's all been done in the past, so I'm not really concerned about how it happens. Obviously, if they were to come back for that review period of time, if we lowered the hours and they want to do 11:00 in the future, there's going to be instances if they were selling beyond those hours, if they're open until 12:00 PM or 12:00 AM, those few hours, if they get caught doing it, it's going to be noted in the document and when either this commissioner or the staff look at it or PD looks at it and be like, hmm, you violated what was agreed to tonight. So I think that there's a fail-safe in there, at least. I mean, how often are you guys popping into stores like these?
Typically, well, we typically do about 50 impact inspections a year for just the grant, and then we do pop in on a regular basis.
Thanks.
All right, one more question?
Sorry, last one. The calls for service, are they typically more centered around the weekends or the weekdays? Or is it all over the map?
I couldn't tell you. I didn't record that information.
Okay, thanks.
One more. I wrote down, we received last iteration of this, quite a few letters from residents neighboring and beyond, and one of them mentioned an armed robbery at Corky's. Did that, is that completely fabricated?
No, I don't know about it. It could have happened.
Okay. I've not heard of it, but I was curious if that was legitimate or not.
I don't know. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Wendy Jo. Appreciate your time for your questions, all right, or for our questions. Now we'll let members of the audience come up for the public comments section and...
I'm Cynthia Halloran, a longtime resident, my entire adult life has been in Newport Beach and Corona del Mar. I'm here on behalf tonight representing my neighborhood. I live in Irvine Terrace. And first of all, we were first apprised of this proposed remodel two and a half years ago, and it had been planned beforehand. At that time, the community was alarmed with the proposal as submitted, and made an extended, very last-minute response to it. And after that response, the applicant removed his application and we've not heard anything since. So the timeliness of this application has surprised the community, and we were first apprised of this in the form of the notification from the city saying that a public hearing was going to be held. So I'm here, a lone ranger tonight, to say that because of COVID, we have, these plans have not been reviewed adequately by the community. The city hall has been closed. We have been obviously distracted by more meaningful and important decisions going on in the city, and the public hasn't really had an opportunity, the community, to look at the plans and give their comment to the plan that looks substantially different than the one that was first submitted. The proposal was significant changes in the exterior, significant changes to landscaping, significant changes, excuse me, significant changes to, sorry, don't do this often, not my job. Significant changes to landscaping, type of business, signage. When it was first presented, it was postulated it was going to be 7-Eleven, that's changed. So many, many things have changed. I submitted a letter when I first heard about this to you, which is part of your packet. I don't know, have you all had a chance to read it? I might take my time to read it to you, enter the record. It's in the record. Okay. So, because I'm here as a lone ranger representing the, our neighbors, first of all, I'd like to comment, you had a recommendation from the CDM Association. Our homeowners association does not presently have a member serving on that committee, so, and have not, and don't regularly do that. I contacted our homeowners association on behalf of our neighbors and they said they couldn't take a position because they hadn't had an opportunity to see the submission prior to their board meeting, which is October 20th. They have said, well, oh my goodness, we should get the information out, but we have no vehicle to do that till we have our board meeting to see how we can contact the community. So the first thing I'd like to ask is saying, this is a huge departure from what was originally planned, and I like to suggest or recommend that we have a, not a decision today, but that we postpone a decision here at the planning level to give the community opportunity to see the plans, review them, and have a more substantive conversation. I have many, many things that are of concern to the neighbors that I should bring up. First and foremost, the police department here has represented one of their main concerns, which is the hours of liquor sale. Could I have an extension since I'm more than myself?
If you could just, over the next, say, 30, 45 seconds, kind of...
Okay, okay. Essentially, we object to the hours of operation as a public safety issue. We object to what's happened to the traffic since COVID and the general increase since the plan was first presented. The intersection is incredibly dangerous and getting more dangerous by time due to pedestrian traffic, the shrinkage of the traffic lanes. There's one lane out, and they said if there's any problem with the bus station, you're sitting there trying to turn onto PCH and you can't maneuver, you're narrow, you're a very narrow thing. The appearance of the building is certainly not in harmony with the village feel. We've had late liquor sales, our wonderful thin blue line in Newport Beach that is, does a tremendous job of patrolling and keeping us safe, 86,000 residents, 7 million visitors in the course of the year. They are stretched thin to patrol the problems on the peninsula. And in the evening hours, late evening hours, we do not, unfortunately, and unfortunately, we do not see a police presence.
I appreciate that, but with them, there's a limited three minutes, have a little bit of time here, but, but yeah, we appreciate your...
Is it possible to get an additional extension at one more?
I think, well, we need to take our...
My last comment would be...
Appreciate it, ma'am, but there is...
My last comment would be that these issues should be addressed at the planning level. We can talk civilly rather than having it as appeal to the city council. So I think if we can take extra time here and talk about it and maybe defer it for another month before we come back with a resolution, it would be really in the community's best interest. We support the gentleman needing to improve his property.
Thank you for your time.
Do you need my address and name or anything?
I think there's a card that we, yeah, right?
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I do hope you will reflect on the comments in the letter that I drafted, unfortunately, on the behalf of the entire community.
All right, thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Sir?
I just want to mention, appreciate having the time here. We live within a block of the liquor store. We've had the house since the late 80s. You know, the problems in our community have, you know, especially during COVID, we've had a lot more transient activity in the evenings. And so one of the things I am very concerned with is, look, I respect the fact that this gentleman, you know, has a right to, you know, succeed in his business and everything like that. But in our current situation with the liquor store that's there closing at 9:00, it seems like at least by midnight, 1:00 in the morning, we can get a decent night's sleep. We don't have a lot of transient activity. I am very worried that if we're having, you know, any type of alcohol sales after 9:00, you know, till 11:00 or 12:00 at night, that I just don't see how that's, you know, like a community impact study seems like it'd be very important. We have, we're just kind of teetering right now with the fact that, you know, we're not having to call, you know, the police a lot on the activities that are going on. I just don't see how this is going to get any better by adding this type of, you know, we have alcohol sales right next door. Why do we need it, you know, in another building? I guess that's all I'm concerned with, and I'd like to see, you know, our community kind of stay with the same fabric that it has been. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much for your time. Additional comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and discuss amongst ourselves and commissioners if they have any questions to staff.
I don't know if the applicant had any rebuttals.
Oh, yeah. Does the applicant have any rebuttals to any comments that were made?
The only, excuse me, the only comment I've got is the, when the police department talks about calls for service, there's a couple of things that happen. One is, you know, they average everything across census districts and they don't take into account zoning. So you may have a census district that has very little crime, very little alcohol-related calls or over saturation, which is the way it's planned, right? You don't want a liquor store in the middle of a neighborhood. And then you've got other census districts that are almost all commercial, and so they'll show really high numbers. So one of the tables on page 71 of your staff report that the Newport Beach Police put together was the average, and the average of Newport Beach is much lower than the county average, which is good, both in the number of alcohol establishments and the calls for service. So, I mean, we're spoiled, right? We're spoiled in that Newport Beach has very high standards, very high quality of life. When we call the police to deal with an issue with a homeless person, they come, and in a lot of communities, they don't. So just keep in mind that, you know, like the 7-Eleven over by Superior in Newport is a terrible run, terribly run operation. And when the Unical Station goes in across the street selling beer and wine, which you guys approved, if there's more calls for service there, do they also look to see, are there a few less calls for service? Because oftentimes, even Hamid, when he's calling for service, it's because of somebody else, because he's not selling alcohol on his property, somebody else having alcohol, perhaps from next door, coming on and being a problem on his site. So just because there's a call for service for that address doesn't necessarily mean it's caused by that address. Anyway, thank you very much.
There's no other, since we still have the public comments section open for everybody, we'll just, yeah.
I just, I haven't really, you know, I live in the community. I'm struggling to find people in our community that are also really supporting, you know, like another store there. I heard you say that you've been talking with a lot of people. I did see a lot of suggestions from the earlier meetings we're taking into consideration. That's appreciated, but the neighbors I'm talking to, I live there, I'm not hearing a lot of support for, and the 7-Eleven was a scary thing for everybody. Doing private ownership may improve some of that, but I've just not seen in the neighborhood, who's asking for this, you know, that really wants to go? I don't need to go buy beer at 10:30 at night. I mean, you know, it's supposed to be serving our community, so I just don't see a lot of support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seen further comments? I just, he didn't have his full three minutes, so I let him to have a little comment, but, okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public comments officially and then, sorry, ma'am, and then we will bring it up to the commission for discussion amongst ourselves. Any questions with staff?
I do have one more question for staff, and it is about the transfer of this business after an approval. So to me, again, I don't really see a significant difference in terms of how the business would be run from a 7-Eleven. So let's say he gets the business up and running and, you know, this is approved as is and everything's going well, I mean, what's to stop him from selling to a 7-Eleven, you know, a year from now? And, right, like, once the alcohol is approved for that site, it runs with the land and, you know, it can change hands a number of times and we have no control over that, right?
You're correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Comments, motions, discussions?
Yes, I heard some discussion around about hours of operation. Have we decided, has anybody come up with a thought on that? It's now open from 6:00 AM, closing at midnight, alcohol sales from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. I heard 9:00 might be a good time, 10:00, maybe not open at 6:00. I don't know. I'd just throw that out. I think it's, that's in our purview. The red banner isn't...
You were going to speak, but I was just actually going to agree to Eric's point about kind of conformity and how we had the other station over on Superior at 10:00, so, but...
I do want to make, if I can just make one point of clarification here. So there has been talk about whether the planning commission has purview over the design. I think that there is some, if we're talking about housing, we absolutely cannot, you know, control design going forward, but one of the findings that are required for the modification is that it's consistent with the design guidelines. As Mr. Jurgen said, that those are very subjective, but I just wanted to, just to praise you that you have a little bit more discretion there than was...
Than say a...
Understood.
A house, housing or something, okay.
I think 9:00 is a reasonable hour for them to start their operations and then evaluate that a year from now to determine if...
6:00 AM would be...
Oh, sorry, 9:00 PM would be the maximum stop. I don't take issue with 6:00 AM. There's a lot of people that work graveyard shifts, they get off work, it's a four-hour gap between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM when booze starts back up for sale again in the state of California. So I don't really take issue with the start. It's the, it's the end time that I have issue with. It's a neighborhood. So 9:00 is a good, good ending time. I would like to see one of those doors be closed, either as the hours get later in the day or as the, that at least stops so that people can't steal anything. I think that having two doors open at late night is a potential for trouble, but for me, 9:00 is a good, a good starting point to stop operations. And then we come back in a year and either this body could do it or we could have the community development director and the police chief decide if 9:00 is a good stop or if they should be granted a little additional later hours based on the way the calls for service are going. So, you know, that was my initial intent looking at this, is I think 9:00 is a good start. It mirrors Corker next door, and, you know, if somebody wants hard liquor, they're going to get to go to Corker and do that up to 9:00. And if somebody wants beer and wine, that's all they get an option for at this location, and there's no individual sales or single sales. So that, I think, would go up to a 40-ounce container of beer and up to anything under a $7.50 of wine. So I think that's pretty reasonable on that ask. I think that will keep the transient population, nobody's going to be buying a $7.50 bottle of wine and, I think, six-pack. They're going to look for those little mini bottles next door at Corker, and I've already walked the property. I know that that's where the problem's coming from. So if they're open at the exact same time, there's no difference. People are going to get their alcohol wherever they get their alcohol in this town, and I think one extra location at a reasonable hour is not going to cause an impact.
Commissioner, I just wanted to clarify what you're saying. We have a, there's a condition 18 that sets the hours of operation for opening, closing, and liquor sale. So we can't just leave it up to somebody else. We have to either adhere to this recommendation or...
Yeah, I want to see condition 18 reflect that its alcohol is till 9:00 instead of 11:00. 6:00 AM till 9:00. And then add a condition or add an additional line in there that says for a year until, you know, PD or if you commissioners want to see this item again, gives that opportunity for us to weigh in, to give them that back to 11 interest.
Is that a motion or is that just for discussion amongst the...
I mean, I think there's going to be some talk still about design standards, the color red, I think, or that look. I think commissioners are going to want to weigh on that, so I wouldn't make a motion at this point because I think there's still more discussion to be had on that.
I'm the last guy you want to talk about with design, so I'm going to not discuss that, but if anyone has any discussions per the Assistant City Attorney's comments. Commissioner Rosi?
Yeah, I want to echo the concept of closing at 9:00. I can get comfortable with that and let them become a good operator. So in terms of alcohol sales, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, making that modification, I could get comfortable with. I would also just recommend if there's a way to, don't hit me over the head with that color blocking, come up with something that's slightly more elegant. There's got to be a way. I just know there is. It's a beautiful community we live in, and I know it's all about branding, and everyone has a position. Mine is... Mine is I would like to see something more elegant, and I know I have no possession in order to enforce it, but that's a desire of mine.
Sorry?
Yeah, I echo your comments. I'm just curious, how, how can we opine on the design review here? Is this something that we can put back to staff to have them work with the applicant as they're going through the plan check process?
I, I think that's probably the most efficient way to do so. I, I think that staff has heard the, the sentiment here and, and understand the tastes of this group, and in order to let the applicant move forward, that, you know, we can rely on them for, for some of that input.
I don't know how that's memorialized in any of these approvals. Maybe it's just something that goes on the public record if, if the applicant is willing to accept a condition to work with staff as they go through the plan check process on the design review and elevations of the building and the, and the materials and the color palette.
All right.
My sentiment, everything that Commissioner Klostermer just said.
You want to make a motion? We get a motion on the floor?
Oh, I just wanted, if I can just make one quick comment. It'll be quick because I know it's falling on deaf ears, but I just want to be very clear for the record. I, I sympathize with the applicant and his need to improve his business model. At the same time, you know, I, I am definitely very much concerned about the addition of another alcohol license in this area. I do think it's also problematic that the applicant hasn't put any, really any, you know, resources or efforts into improving the property in almost, you know, 20 years of, of being there, and I, I, we have hundreds of letters from residents. I don't know, we heard from Irvine Terrace. I don't know that people are aware of it this time. Last time, somebody posted it on Nextdoor and it went viral. I don't think it's, it's in front of people, this go-around, so I'm not sure that it's really on anyone's radar, unfortunately, but I don't think it's any different than it was before. A lot of the concerns that were, that were expressed previously, I think, still very much apply, and we've heard from Wendy Jo at the police department. It's not a question of if this will impact calls for service and then the surrounding neighborhood, it, it's just a question of how much it will affect the neighboring property owners and the community overall, and it's only a matter of time till that cumulative impact is very, very much noticed by those of us who live in Corona del Mar and, and, you know, recreate there. So again, I know it's superfluous and probably not an opinion shared by anyone here, but I also do think there's a decent chance this will change ownership at some point, and we could very well see a 7-Eleven in there. So I just want that on the record and being clear and get off my soapbox.
Thank you for your comments. So, anyone else? If there's not, I think our secretary has a motion to make.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve with the modification that the alcohol sales will be capped at nine o'clock, and with the understanding that you guys will work with staff to try to work with the color scheme and the palettes to be have, be a little more elegant. Use permit, P2019-004.
I'll second, if I could just have a friendly amendment that after close of alcohol sales, one of those doors gets shut. I don't know if that's something we can, I'm sorry. No, the door's shut on, I don't know, ADA-wise.
So Commissioner Wigan, we, we can provide some additional language for security purposes. I just don't want to violate the fire building code, but we can add the language for security.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So that, then, then don't worry about it. I will second your motion.
Clarification on the motion, the second. Non-AM alcohol sales, when does the convenience market close?
It would continue to stay open until 12 o'clock. They would lock all of the alcohol, and that's why the door thing, to me, was the issue.
All right, it wasn't, it wasn't clear. Now I have it.
Clarification as well. Commissioner Wigan, I thought you had mentioned in your revision to condition of approval number 10, if we were going to limit the hours to 9:00 PM, that they would have the opportunity to revisit those hours after a year?
Oh, my, yeah, Commissioner, would you...
Steph, I want to add that to the, to the, to the motion.
And I'll agree to that second. Thank you, Commissioner Klostermer.
And that annual review can be with the Director or PD.
All right, let's call the question.
The motion carries 6-1 with Vice Chair Kryman voting no.
Thank you, everyone, staff, everyone, and commission for all our input here. And let's go ahead and move to number nine, staff and commissioner items. Item number six, motion for reconsideration. Seeing none, we'll go to item number seven, which is report by community development director or request for matters which a planning commission member would like placed on a future agenda.
Thank you, Chair Lara. Just real quick, for next Tuesday's city council meeting, we have the second reading on the Newport, the residences at Newport Center, which is, that's at the car wash there, 150 Newport Center Drive, that'll be the second reading. And in addition to that, it'll be the second reading for the general plan amendment for Pacifica Christian High School. That's a GPA. And we are, we have no items scheduled for your October 21st planning commission, so we have canceled October 21st. We are looking to get comments back from the, from housing and community development on our housing element, our draft housing element, so we're looking forward to bringing those comments back to the city council at the October 26 council meeting to get a little bit further direction as we finalize our housing element, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll go to item number eight, request for excused absences.
Believe it or not, I won't be here on November 4th. It's been years since I missed one.
All right. That looks like our only one. Well, I want to thank everyone. This was a longer than, longer meeting, a lot of input, a lot of good input on all sides here, and appreciate everyone's time, so let's go ahead and adjourn for the evening at 9:28, it looks like.